Call to order, we have a quorum. May we have the roll call, please, Gail?
Mayor Styx.
Here.
Mayor Potemhaney.
Here.
Councilmember Blatz.
Here.
Councilmember Francina.
Here.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Here.
Thank you, Gail, and welcome to the April 26, 2022, meeting of the Ojai City Council. Councilmember Wyrick, will you please do the pledge for us?
My...
Thank you.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bill. And approval of the agenda? Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Blatz.
Yes.
Councilmember Francina.
Yes.
Mayor Potemhaney.
Yes.
Mayor Styx.
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick.
Yes.
Thanks, Gail. And we have a presentation tonight, exciting, a presentation of virtual public arts tour by the Ojai Arts Commission. So, thank you so much, Christine, for being here. Excited to see.
Thank you, Mayor Styx, and thank you for this opportunity. I know you always have a very long agenda, and I promised that I would keep it very short, my opening comments and my closing comments. And the film you're going to see will speak for itself. So, I want to just give you just a little opening. On February 12, 2020, hundreds of public art tour brochures featuring a walking tour of public art in downtown Ojai were delivered to my doorstep. And exactly one week later, America was virtually shut down due to the COVID pandemic, and those boxes sat in my house. So, for close to two years, the public announcement and the launching of this very important project has been delayed. And in the meantime, the tours were made available to the public on the Arts Ojai City website, and recently, the Chamber of Commerce has made brochures available around town. Then, when Smitty West was appointed to the Arts Commission, he had a brainstorm, and he took the tours, there are four in all, representing over 40 public artworks within the city's boundaries. And he added a whole new level and filmed two of the tours, the downtown tour and the east city tour. And the one you're going to see tonight is the east city tour. So, we're going to show you Smitty's video of the east city tour, and this is not just for you, it's for the public as well. And it's narrated by our own commission chair, Nigel Chisholm.
Hi, my name is Nigel Chisholm, and I am one of seven appointed City of Ojai Arts Commissioners. Right behind the camera there is Smitty West, another of Ojai's Arts Commissioners. Today, we are taking the East City Walk, one of the four walks that encompass all of Ojai's massive and ever-growing collection of public art. Ojai, a geographically small city of just four square miles and 7,500 lucky residents, is set in the beautiful Ojai Valley all around me here, just 12 miles inland from the Pacific Ocean in Ventura, California. A short drive up from Highway 150 will bring you to our idyllic community, and while it may be small in size, it has an enormously rich history of art in myriad forms. Its public art program dwarfs that of many major cities around the world. Join Smitty and myself on this fabulous East City Walk, and afterwards, pick up a brochure from the Ojai Museum, just down the road there, and follow in our footsteps. We start at the skate park at the intersection of Ojai Avenue and Fox Streets, and we'll end at the Ojai Art Center just over yonder. Enjoy the walk. I know we will. Big Red Roller. Well-known metal sculptor Theodore Gall came up with the idea to repurpose an oil wheel from a local well for this public art project. Big Red Roller, situated in the southwest corner of Ojai Skate Park on Ojai Avenue, emulates what goes on inside the park: skateboards in lines and roller skates in motion. Painted a bright red with graffiti-resistant paint, it is visible not only to skaters, but also to pedestrians walking along Ojai Avenue. Gall, the same public artist who created Spirit Chase in Rotary Park, gifted the Big Red Roller to the city pro bono. Our next piece is at the Shell Station on Ojai Avenue, The Chief. The iconic beauty of Chief Peak is captured by artist Bernard Cullen in a three-panel mural that graces the facing wall. Nearly 11 feet in length, the triptych is mounted an inch from the wall, allowing for a dramatic shadow effect behind it. To create the mural, Cullen used a handheld plasma cutter to make hundreds, if not thousands, of meticulous cuts into sheet metal. The edges were beveled to soften the design and give it a free-flowing feel. Oak trees, created separately, were then welded onto the main piece. A waterproof finish of metallic bronze particles protects and preserves the artwork. A laborious process, Cullen has been welding and forging artworks with a handheld plasma cutter for 40 years. This enables him to express himself in fine detail that modern technology doesn't allow. Headed east from the Shell Station, Shelter Social Club, managers of the Kri Hotel at 1180 East Ojai Avenue, are on a mission to create artistic spaces and experiences that bring community together. They have done just that with a one-of-a-kind art installation that reflects the hotel's postmodern Italian motif. Ladders, rectangular boxes of varying heights by Los Angeles-based artist Lucky Remington, are strategically placed throughout the property and draw upon the lure of mid-century color and chromatic harmonies. Be sure to check out the specially-commissioned oil painting hanging over the fireplace inside the hotel lobby. Notice how artist Matteo Parotta's color scheme complements the soft palette of Remington's ladders. The Business of Bees. The Ojai Valley Business Park, in the center of Bryant Circle, between 407C and 407D, boasts a towering sculpture that honors Ojai's citrus industry. The sculpture is eight feet high and weighs 6,000 pounds. Fashioned from golden Peruvian travertine and orange calcite from Utah, it is titled "The Business of Bees." The travertine represents a honeycomb, and the calcite, an orange. Artist Chris Provenzano, who wanted to bring awareness to the bee colony collapse disorder, worked collaboratively with Paul Lindhart and several of Ventura's art city sculptors on various aspects of this amazing piece. The glass wings of the bees are by Michael Racine. Down the road at 416 Bryant Street is a City of Ojai commissioned piece by G. Ramon Byrne, the Ojai Table. A Ventura art city sculptor, Byrne designed the table to match the architectural style of the building where it is placed and to reflect the Sespe Mountain range that flanks the Ojai Valley. The table is made of two types of limestone and sandstone and weighs 12,000 pounds. The tabletop alone weighs more than 5,000 pounds. Fortune Cookies. When the Wild Tennis Academy and Preparatory School underwent a renovation in 2011, a whimsical public art project was installed in the commons area between the academy and the athletic club's parking area. Public artist Jeff Sanders silkscreened over 50 fortune cookie sayings onto 6-inch by 34-inch horse lint tile pieces using ceramic glazes in a variety of soft pastel colors. The pieces were then fired for durability and eventually fitted flush into the concrete walkways. Scattered randomly throughout the commons paths, Sanders and academy owner Mark Wild selected sayings they felt would be particularly meaningful to the students traveling the walks. A few blocks west, you'll find Los Arboles condominiums. The missionary-style Los Arboles condominiums incorporates California pottery and tile throughout. In front of the complex sits the extraordinary Peacock mural bench. Based upon an original fountain created at the famous Malibu Potteries, the bench and tiles were given as a gift to Ojai by the owner of California pottery and tile works of Los Angeles. Adjacent to the Peacock mural, you'll find the Green Man Fountain. This is a variation of the Green Man Fountain at the Adamson House in Malibu. It is also known as the Neptune Fountain. Headed back north on Montgomery toward downtown Ojai, you will find the Ojai Art Center, the oldest operating art center in California. While you're at the art center, you may want to visit inside where there are always interesting art exhibitions. A small shop in front has art by local artists for sale. When the art center was renovated in 1997, an exquisitely detailed doormat mural by RTK Studios was added to the floor of the art center's main entry bordered with cuerd de seca, or dry cord. This is an old Spanish moor technique that Richard Kite and Mary Kennedy, RTK tile owners and artists learned, and used to perfection here throughout Ojai. A line is drawn around colored areas using a bulb syringe filled with manganese carbonate and oil. When the tiles are fired, the mixture burns off, leaving the dark outline. Copper light sconces by Jan Sanchez were incorporated on either side of the door. Hand-carved wooden doors created in the 80s by Jack and Karen Chaney complete the rustic craftsman look. Entering the art center through the hand-carved wooden doors and moving toward the back in the rear courtyard of the art center, a six-foot-tall peace pole is crowned by a Ted Gall sculpture titled "Peace in Man's Hand." An expressive hand holds an olive branch and spreading dove's wings. The peace pole was a collaborative effort of 12 Ojai artists. "May Peace Prevail on Earth" is written in four languages on the pole's sides. The pole was dedicated in 2006 in a ceremony performed by Tumash elder Julie Timmermy. Adjacent to Peace in Man's Hand is Big Pear Cactus. Sculptor Harry Castellano fashioned the eight-foot-tall pear cactus from rusted steel. A wrought iron gate with serendipitous details was forged by metal artist Jan Sanchez in 2001 and defines the back patio area. While looking at the patio gates, be sure to look from the bottom to the top. You'll notice valley oak branches and leaves. As your eyes move upwards, you'll see a painting easel, and above that, a Picasso-esque picture. To the right, you'll see a 3D image of a woman posing on top of a box. Crowning the gates, you'll see the phases of the moon. Exiting through the wrought iron patio gates will take you into the back of Libby Park. Well, there we are. We've come to the conclusion of our East City Tour. I hope you've enjoyed it as much as Smitty and I have on this beautiful, beautiful Ojai day. It's always beautiful in Ojai. It's just a fabulous place to live. So, right now, I'm going to walk across Bostrom's Bridge there into Libby Park, which is a fabulous place to find some more public art, and also, as it turns out, a great place to pick up the downtown art tour. I'll see you there.
And I'll just point out while it's scrolling that the people who helped out with this are listed there, and I want to thank Smitty West for his video, and of course Nigel. And special thanks to Elise DePoyt, a name who some of you know, and whose book, The Fountains and Sculptures of Ojai, served as an invaluable resource and inspiration for this project. Carlos Grasso did the brochure layout, and Colleen McDougall did the map and the cover art. And the Public Art Tour Ad-Hoc Committee included Connie Campbell, Jackie Clark, Tara Saylor, Sammy Zauringer, and of course, Elise. I have to mention Roger Conrad and Susan Stinsmullin-Amen for the photography. And for the public to know, the brochures, which I'm just going to hold one up here, are available at the museum. I don't know how many are still downtown. I know that the Chamber of Commerce distributed them, but this was not meant to be a virtual tour. This is meant to be a walking tour of downtown. And if you take it, there's a map, and there's descriptions of the various pieces that you see. I don't know that docent tours are going to be available much longer, but if you're lucky enough to get one, you'll hear all kinds of stories that were not printable about each piece of art in this. And as I said, there are four tours. QR codes, that's the last thing I'm going to mention. There are QR codes inside the brochure, so that if you go on the downtown tour and you scan these QR codes, the other three tours will pop up on our website, and you can take those tours also. It's one thing to see it here, it's something else to see it in person. I've given two docent tours to the Women's Committee of the Ojai Music Festival, and they were blown away by it. And I gave another tour that Bill Wyrick went on. Anyone else in this room? Bill? And Bill, was that something to see?
Absolutely, as you say, always learn something.
Yeah.
Learn more and get a deeper appreciation that way, much more.
So, once again...
And things to do further.
And I do want to mention one final thing, and that is that not all the artworks that you saw here are a result of the public art program. Some of the pieces that you saw here are public, are private artworks. But the committee decided we want to include artworks even if they weren't part of the public art program, so that the people could really see what Ojai has, just within its city limits. Forty-five-plus pieces of public art. We've been busy. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, can I say one quick thank you? Just thank you, thank you, thank you, those beautiful films. Thank you for all your work, and so much gratitude, and I can't wait to hear those stories. Oh, not the stories. And thanks to Nigel and Smitty. Yeah. Sure, yeah, go ahead.
I feel kind of ashamed, actually, having watched that. I have spent so much time in the arts facility and not really looked at that art. And I play tennis and walk across those little things, those little sayings, and I had no idea that was art. I just thought they put them there for the students. So, I just think what you've done is wonderful. You got to get to the schools, because we just so assume everything is beautiful and artistic. We didn't, sometimes we just don't stop and look at what fabulous art is in our community. I'm certainly going to stop and take more time now. Thanks.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Yeah, the Picasso and the gate, I can't wait to go look at that one. That's beautiful.
Just one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Christine, if there was some way of finding out, is there any city on earth with more public art installations per square mile than Ojai? It'd be an interesting thing to find out.
Well, I don't know how I would Google that, Bill.
We might be, we might be right up there.
I'm sure there are other art communities like Ojai that value the art spirit the way...
Oh, I'm sure they do. I'm talking about density.
Mayor, I have a question, please. Christine, so I want to get this right. I go to the, I take the tour, I go to the site, and I click on this code, and it tells me what the piece of art is.
Not exactly. So, can I grab a brochure from somebody?
You know, I did the tour in, you know, it's interesting, I did the tour in Pennsylvania for the Getty.
Did you?
For Gettysburg. And it was interesting, as you would stop, and then there'd be a monitor there, and they would actually give you an enactment of what took place at that site. And so, I was thinking of that while you were speaking, and I said, what is stopping us from actually doing something like that, where you go, press a button, and they actually tell you what Smitty and them just explained to us?
So, for this one, no, it's not that high-tech. For this one, what you do is you go on the downtown tour, and you would stop, let's say you started Club Vista Park, and what you would do, you would stop and you would read what it says about the, and all those. If you want to take additional tours, the QR codes are for additional tours. So, if you want to take the East City Tour, you'd scan that little square. If you want to take the West City Tour, you would scan that little tour. And if you want to expand the downtown tour, there's a tour called Along the Way. But some of the members of the ad hoc committee, because they do the tours, the architectural tours from the museum, they advised us how long the tour should be, like how much people can actually take. And so, if we had included all the pieces of Along the Way on the downtown tour, it would have been a whole morning of walking. So, we made Along the Way.
Well, that's what I'm trying to say, is if someone actually wanted to do this themselves...
They could.
They could, but who's the liaison to the Arts Commission this quarter? Do we know?
Yeah, it's old-fashioned in a way, yeah.
No, but that's what I'm saying, who's the liaison?
I'm the liaison to the Arts Commission.
So, Suza, make note, and go talk to them about how we can figure out how to do this push-button-to-talk, to, and figure out what it costs and how we can do something like that. I think it's incredible that we have all of this, and it's a shame that we miss out because we either have to take a walk and have a docent tell us what's going on versus having the ability to go to the site and actually press a button and have someone really explain the history.
But do keep in mind that what you hear me say as a docent, we could never put on a, because I'm telling you some backstories that we didn't want to put into print.
You can put as much as you want in that moment on that.
I know some, I know some backstories. Also, for the public to know, all of the tours are on the city website, so you can do a virtual tour, sitting in your chair at home, put it up on channel, whatever it is. Oh, and the videos are running on channel...
Videos are running on Channel 10, I believe, daily.
Channel 10. And the other video, the downtown tour, is a video by, that Smitty West narrates, and it's quite nice. So, is that it?
All right, well, thank you so much, Christine. That was lovely, and much appreciated. I know you worked so hard for so long on this. Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you, Christine. That was a wonderful presentation. I also wanted to thank Jeff Sanders, who's been a long, he was mentioned in there, some of the artwork that he was done, and the bees at work with the orange and a number of other artistic elements of the Bryant Circle, I can't, business park that the city at one point so wonderfully tried to kick me out of for not being zoned correctly in a business park, which I laugh at nowadays. There is beautiful art in there. That installation was literally right outside my office. My office used to be done on Bryant, and I used to sit next to it all the time. There were just little things that were required to be done that I have so much respect for in a business setting that are really great, and that construction is one of them that really, if you ever go down and into Bryant and see how our code is written and how, I believe it was Ted Moore who helped work on it, but the way the eaves are so it looks smaller, the way the buildings look, and the art that's installed is really amazing. It's a really a great way of how we've done a business park, because we don't have a lot of business-style parks. That is Ojai's style of doing it. That's really, really cool. And I just want to thank, and Nigel as well, who did such a great job, and Smitty highlighting that, and a couple other things are really great, but a couple artists in there I know, a couple installations I know really well. Christine, thank you. I've done that tour. It is actually really fun, and it's kind of cool. It reminded me of when I was in college, and they made us find all the, like, there were nine fountains at USC campus, and we had to go find all of them and take a picture in front of all of them for kind of a scavenger hunt kind of thing. There's so much art in Ojai that, as Jeff Starkweather was saying, you just kind of go unnoticed, because we just take it for granted how much beautiful stuff there is in Ojai. So, just to remind everybody, keep a close look. There's so much great stuff out there. Christine, thank you very much, and I really appreciate the walking tours and the art tours. They're really awesome.
Thank, you're welcome.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to commission reports? Anything? Okay, all right, we will then move on to public communication, and we just have, we have one public communication, Jill Dolan.
Hello, I'm Jill Dolan, and I must say, I couldn't have planned this any better, timing-wise. Art, art, art. I am with the Ojai Art Center Theater, and where, you know, in Montgomery, you know the art center there that we just saw. I spend a lot of time there, and this weekend, we're opening our next play, which is a series of one-act plays called All in the Timing. They're extremely funny, and they're very brief, and I encourage everyone to come. Like everyone who's been doing arts theater, the past two years have been really tough on everyone, and what started as our "you must stay at home" order became our habit, and now people are having, you know, second thoughts about going out. It's like, it's so much easier to just stay home. Why do I want to get dressed, you know? So, we're fighting that same kind of battle that many other theaters, both community and professional theaters, are fighting. And so, I'm here today to invite all of you, I brought postcards for you, for all of you to come and see this wonderful show. It runs, starts this Friday, April 29, Friday, Saturday, Sundays, and it runs through May 15. And I think it's funny, and I think you might need a laugh at this point.
And what are the timeframes? It starts at what time?
It starts at 7:30 on Friday and Saturday nights, and then it starts at 2 o'clock on Sunday afternoons.
And how much?
Oh, gosh. If I had my glasses on, I could see you. If you're an Art Center member, it's $18. Someone can see. Twenty for non-members. Yeah, it's a deal. There you go. And I believe this production is actually a fundraiser for the Art Center Theater. We have an interesting financial split with the Art Center itself, so, anyway, I thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Exciting, much appreciated. All right, we will move from there to the consent calendar.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry, Suza.
Should I check the Zoom?
Oh, yes, sorry.
That's right. If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on general public comments, if you would use the raise hand function now. No one.
Okay, thank you, Gail. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar. Motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Before I second, I believe we may have a public comment on one of the consent items?
Yes, we do.
So...
Can I may want to pull F, Mayor?
Okay, so you're pulling F, the consent, the comment is on F?
Yeah, the comment's on F, so I would move to approve all except F for the public comment.
Okay, I will second that. Roll call, please, Gail.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Styx?
Yes.
Mayor Potemhaney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Thank you, Gail. And we have a public comment on the F, Mr. Bill Miley, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley, and this has to do with the Joint Zero Emission Rollout Plan between the Ojai Charlie and Gold Coast Transit District. So, this item is of special interest to me. As your council knows, you appointed me as one of the citizen representatives to the Ventura County Transportation Commission Citizen Advisory Committee. I participated in two Zoom meetings, and the committee is currently involved in giving opinions and advice on the draft for the Ventura County Transportation Commission's, get this, Coordinated Human, Coordinated Transit Human Services Plan, which happens every five years. I'm aware of the California State 2019 Innovative Clean Transit Regulation requirement. I understand that the rollout plan ultimately requires transit authorities like ours to use clean burning fuels by 2040. And this is just a little aside, if I keep up my water exercises, I may be still around to check on you guys. I believe it is important to note city involvement. I know that Councilman Haney, Councilmember Haney, has been the city's representative on the Ventura County Transportation Commission for some time, and I understand now he's on the board of the Gold Coast Transit Authority, the bus that comes up here. Councilmember Wyrick is now the city's representative on the commission. I would suggest much credit should go to both of them for the offer by Gold Coast Transit to join them in preparing a zero emission plan. Just think that, no gas is going up there, thus saving the city considerable dollars, because Gold Coast is paying for it, and bringing us into a big, successful transit system. This is a significant step towards our climate goals, and I want to thank Gold Coast.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Miley. Any comments on Zoom, Gail?
If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand function now. No one.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion.
Move to approve one F.
Okay.
Yeah, I had one thought there, just all the, you know, there's, there's, again, from a small city standpoint, with Ryan on, on the Air Resource Board, Bill on VCTC, me on, on, on Gold Coast, between the three of us in representing this small community and all of these transportation and air quality boards, it's real interesting how a small entity can get so much support and so much help by asking and being persistent, sometimes being a stick in the eye, but most of the time just being persistent. And, and, you know, I've been working on Gold Coast for two years to, to be a big part of this, because we're a small entity, and we don't have hundreds of thousands or millions of dollars to be replacing our equipment. So I wanted to say thank you to Alma. I wanted to say thank you for James, for following up on the requests that I've made, and even on things that I've forgotten that I even made. But thank you too specifically for this and getting this to happen. So thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Okay, we have a motion?
Motion to approve one F.
Second.
Okay, a roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Wierich?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatts?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. All right, let's move on to discussion. Item number two, the 2022 Street Paving Plan. We've all been waiting for it. Thank you so much, James, for making it happen.
Yeah, thank you.
Alma, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna do a brief introduction, and then I'll hand it over to Alma here in a, in a moment. But we have a couple slides we, we're gonna work through. Give me one second to remember how to show them. Every computer, it's in a different spot. I think it's here. Okay, there we go. So, yes, this is our 2022 paving project. And we wanted, I wanted to start with just kind of a little bit of background and a little bit of history on this project. I realized as we started digging into this that I thought I knew the history, and even I didn't really maybe know the full extent of it. I had been telling people for months that we were gonna finalize our 10-year-old street paving plan and finally finish it this year. And as we started to dig through, we realized, and this map shows, this is actually a 13-year paving plan that dates back to 2009. So it is a big accomplishment. I think that we are going to, to finish this off this year. And the, the plan for this year that Alma will get into is we're looking at finishing the 2021 and 2022 planned paving projects. I wanted to explain a little bit about that, because one of the, the things I think we've talked a lot about with Measure C and the, and some of the future plans is that we plan to pave much more aggressively. And we plan to pave, to get the paving quality score up. And so just as a little bit of background, we started to dig into how much the city has paved since 2000. And I know there's a lot of numbers on screen, but just to illustrate, this is essentially all of our paving this millennium. And so, from 2000 to 2002, there was $0 spent paving. 2003, $81,000. 2004, 0. 2005, 43. 2006, 0. 2007, 2008, 0. And so, and, you know, the first almost decade of the millennium, we spent about $120,000 paving. So when we talk about our low paving score, it shouldn't really be a surprise, you know, with, with, with that level of funding. But so around that time, the city did a couple, did, did one positive step, which is the city started to take a chunk of the hotel tax money and put it towards paving. So we were able to start increasing it a little bit. 2009, $370,000. 2010, $400,000. 0 in 2011, $170,000. 2012, 0 in 2013. And, and then in 20, from 2014 to 2019, we started to do more regular paving, where it was about $1 million every other year. With 2017 being the prior highest amount of paving we've ever done, we did 20, $1.7 million in 2017. And so, one thing we wanted to explain is, this is, this is why it was a 13-year paving plan previously. The positive moving forward is that we will be able to be much more aggressive with the new Measure C funding. And we, right now, we are preparing the updated pavement management plan that would propose budgeting about $1.2 million every year, not every other year. And that would allow us to get our pavement score up from a fair score of about 53, where we're currently at, to a good score of above 70 in about five years. And so when you really look at this, this 13-year cycle was really stopping the score from dropping, or stopping the pavement condition from dropping. But the next five-year plan that we're working on and will bring back to council after we complete this plan, will be the first plan that I think will actually improve the quality and the condition and the score of our pavement. And so Alma will talk a little bit more about that. As the note there says, the Measure C tax was approved in 2020. That's the hotel tax that goes towards these projects. And it took a, a year longer to start collecting than we expected because of COVID. But we should now have a regular substantial funding source for, for paving and other capital improvement projects. And so, we aren't going to approve a five-year plan tonight, but we wanted to just make the point that the plan with our pavement management plan that will come back to council will be to, to increase the funding. And this just makes the point I mentioned earlier about the, the goal will be to increase our condition from a fair condition to a good condition citywide. So. And that being said, overall, we have a fair condition, but the city, and this map was in the materials, there are several portions of the city's streets that are not in fair condition. There are several portions that were failing or poor condition. So that's reflected on this map. I, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and hand off to Alma to, to present the majority of this presentation. I'm realizing as I'm speaking that I think this is Alma's first meeting in front of the city council, since it's only our second meeting back in the last couple of years. So with that, I'll introduce Alma Kazada, which I pronounce terribly, our Public Works Director. And I will hand the laptop off.
Welcome.
So, yes, it is my first time in front of the city council. And I haven't seen the final order of, I haven't seen the final order of the slide deck, so this will be exciting. I, I also wanted to let you guys know that I did print out some handouts, so that, because they are easier to see in this format than what is in the binder.
You got this, Alma.
Be nice. Just be nice.
I promise to be nice to you tonight.
Okay, so. Would anyone in the audience like some of the handouts?
When we're done, we'll hand them to Gail. We'll take care of that.
Okay. So what the map shows, and, and, we'll, we'll get the handouts to the audience as well. That's the, those were the results of the street survey that staff, that our consultant conducted from December through February of, of this year, earlier this year. And what it shows is that while our average PQI is 53.4, 67%, approximately 67% of our streets are gonna need some type of treatment. The other 33% are in good condition and don't require any type of treatment at this point.
Alma, while you're, Alma, while you're waiting, could you, could you break down fail, failed, poor, fair, and good? Is there a criteria in a simple phrase?
Yeah. So if you look at the map, you can see the failed streets are, have a PQI of equal to or less than 20. The poor streets have a PQI between 20 and 40. Fair-conditioned streets have a PQI between 40 and 70. And good streets have a PQI higher than 70.
So what does failed mean?
Failed is usually where you see a lot of visible surface distresses, potholes, cracking, rutting, shoving, those types of things. It's very visible. The interesting thing about the, the street survey is that it did, it just mixed results. Our subgrade, meaning the, you know, pavement comes in layers, so the subgrade that's below the asphalt that you see is actually in really good condition. And in some areas of the city, it was actually over a foot in, in thickness. The score on the subgrade, because each layer has a different score, the score of the subgrade was 89 or higher as an average throughout the whole city. So even though the street looks visibly distressed on the surface, it doesn't mean that it's bad underneath. It's pretty good on, on the, we're the part that we don't see. So it does, it's not gonna require a full type of reconstruction or major reconstruction in many of the areas. A lot of it will be surface, the surface distresses that we're gonna be correcting.
Alma, would you prefer to finish your presentation and take questions at the end or take questions?
Oh, interrupt. Please interrupt.
Oh, raise your hand.
Like I said, this, this is dynamic. I haven't seen the final order of the slide deck. So, yes, please interrupt.
Mayor, can you see my raised hand?
No, go ahead, Suza.
Okay. Alma, the map shows the Ojai Valley Trail, and people are always asking who's responsible for repairing, you know, potholes on the trail. Does that mean that this sec, this section that's in the city is our responsibility and will be taken care of? Or what does that mean? That red stripe?
The red stripe.
On the Ojai Valley Trail and Country Club intersection there?
Country Club.
So the, no portion of the trail is included in our paving project. The red stripe is Country Club. And.
Okay.
And I think, Alma, the, the simple question is, what portion of, of the bike trail is the city responsible for?
The portion of the bike trail that the city is responsible for is the area behind Libby Park from Signal to Montgomery. And then there's a break in between. And then the next portion would be from Fox to Fulton. Those are the city-owned areas that the city is responsible for maintaining. We do plan on doing some work to those sections, but it's, it's gonna take a coordinated effort, because the county is responsible for maintaining the remainder of it. And I've been in discussion with them, emailing to see if we can kind of coordinate the maintenance of it, so that we don't end up with just the city sections looking bright and brand new, and the rest of it not as great. So.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. People want to know that, so that's important. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, so, moving on, we, as James said, we had already committed to finishing out the 13-year paving cycle. So what this shows on the green handout, the one that you guys have in front of you, the one with the green background, there's a total of 34 road segments that are going to be, that are gonna have some type of treatment. And the treatment is gonna range from a full reconstruction with a six-inch gravel base through a hot-mixed asphalt overlay with a one-and-a-half-inch thickness. And just full disclaimer, I am not a traffic engineer. So if there's specific questions on what those types of treatments entail, I do have Derek Rapp from StanTech on the line, and he can address those technical questions. He's the expert in this. So what we see here, I'm, I'm gonna go through the slide and show which street segments are proposed for full reconstruction, edge mill with a one-and-a-half-inch overlay, two-and-a-half-inch overlay, and just down the line, and then show you examples of what the streets look like. So. Oh, this slide was out of order. Okay, so just some PQI rating examples. What we see, starting from the top, is a P, that says PCI. It should be PQI rating of 100, which is in good condition, brand new. So that's in the top left-hand corner. Moving over is a PQI of 80 in satisfactory condition. And then you see the PQI of 60, that's fair condition. And you start, that's where you start to see surface distresses, cracks, and so forth. And then when you get down to a PQI of 40, which is the poor condition, that's where you see significant alligator cracking, just lots of surface distresses. That's where you get the potholes when it rains. If you continue down to 20, which is really just poor, failed condition, that's where you see significant potholes and rutting and just lumpy, bumpy texture. Not great. And those are not Ojai streets, because I don't think Ojai has bricks underneath. This is just a sampling of, of different types of distresses. And then all the way down to a PQI of 10, which is absolutely failed, totally destroyed, and that would be the most expensive type of repair. The type of treatments that we're recommending for this 2022 paving cycle are listed above. We're, we're constrained to six different, six distinct types of treatments with a cost breakdown of each one. And you can see the full reconstruction is the most expensive. That's what's gonna eat up most of our paving budget for this fiscal year. The segments that will be, that will require a full reconstruction, those are 12 segments listed above. And that's gonna be a total cost of just over $1 million. I did pull some images of select streets, not every single one, just to give you an example of their current condition or semi-current. These, these are actually older images that I pulled off Google Earth. So they're in a little bit worse condition now than what you see up there. But still pretty bad what you see up there. The next type of, of treatment is the edge mill with one-and-a-half-inch-thick overlay. And those are, let's see, edge mill, those are 10 different street segments for a total cost of $325,550. What those streets look like, we have Daly Road, you can see the alligator cracking, and West Summer Street, again, with potholes and alligator cracking. Moving on to edge mill with a two-and-a-half-inch overlay, there's three distinct road segments that are proposed for that type of treatment for a total cost of $121,458. And what those streets look like, or I only was able to grab Grand Street, and this is a little bit older image than what is out there currently, because I was told that those citrus trees are no longer there. So I just wanted to point that out. But the street is in pretty bad shape from when Casitas replaced the water main there. Yes?
So Alma, as I look at this, I'm seeing a curb on the left side. So we're gonna overlay from curb and then all the way over past the white line, what, 10 feet? Is there a distance from the, the white line that acts as a lane? I guess delineates the lane. And then you have the area, the asphalt area to the right of the white line. So when we do this whole, when we do this whole area, we're gonna go curb 10 feet past that white line? Five feet past? How?
So that's, I do have Derek on the line, and I'd like to get his input on it, because I don't know the answer to that question. I.
Can, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is Derek Rapp with StanTech. So the, the approach for an overlay would be essentially to, to apply that two-and-a-half inches over the entire surface that is, that is existing in asphalt. And obviously, you can see there, there's some variability in the edge of pavement on the, on the side without the curb and gutter. So there would be some decision point as to what the, what the overall width of the roadway should be, and, and it would be overlaid at a consistent width. We do like to have some shoulder for, for purposes of maintenance of the, of the roadway, because if you get the edge of, of pavement too close to the white line, then vehicle tires start to get very close to the edge of that pavement. The edge of the pavement deteriorates at a faster rate. So you do like to have some shoulder. Obviously, if bikes were designed. Obviously, uh, if bikes, uh, were desired here, we'd want to have more shoulder. Um, but just from a pavement maintenance standpoint purely, you would like to have at least a couple of feet of shoulder beyond the white line. I hope that answers the question.
I, I asked it because of this, of that reason. Um, if we wanted to put a, a charrow or a bike lane in there and also for pedestrian traffic, um, do we have the capabilities? Is that wide enough? Is it ten feet, twelve feet, fourteen feet? That's what I was asking.
Yep. And, um, and those are all things that could be looked at in the design, uh, approach. Um, there are, obviously are a number of constraints, uh, that could prevent us from doing that. Um, if there are roadside conditions that are above and beyond just a pure pavement maintenance, um, project, and we're looking at more of, uh, of a, a larger CIP project, there may be something that prevents that. But we can look at that in concert with the maintenance activities.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Derek.
Can you see my raised hand?
Sorry, Susan, Ryan, we can't see you. So just shout it out. Go ahead, Souza.
Okay. I want to, um, you know, dovetail on, on Randy's, uh, Haney's comments. Um, for years, we've discussed ways to re-stripe the street so that bike lanes can work. Um, and also if we don't have bike lanes, that I think this would be an ideal time to take a look at how the charrows are placed. Um, so is, can, 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 can you clarify how the ATP plans for Grand can be coordinated with the paving schedules so that, you know, we're working in sync? Um, I'm not quite sure how to ask it, but I do know that, uh, the street, somewhere we have, you know, the street has been measured, and there is, there is a way, uh, for example, by removing parking on one side of the street, which I realize is not popular, but it is a route to, a very, very important route to, to Topo Topo School and to Sarzodi Park, to the Recreation Center. So I just want to make sure that, um, if, if, you know, before striping is done, before the street is, the re-striping is done, af, how does that work after the paving? And how can we coordinate that and the ATP plans, uh, for Grand Avenue?
So, um, I, the, so the ATP project currently is, uh, the project that we, the ATP project is on, focused on Ojai Avenue and Maricopa Highway. I, I think, um, I want to just kind of clarify because, uh, I, I know that ATP is a hot topic. The,
Maybe I should, sorry, can I interrupt? Maybe I should say the complete streets plan.
Correct. Yeah, exactly. Thank you.
That's what I meant.
Yeah. So, so we do have a complete streets plan, uh, that is Grand Avenue bike lanes that has been on the plan, like, like, um, Councilmember Francina mentioned for many years. It was set, uh, to start engineering in twenty-two, twenty-three. So it was set, and this was set a few years back, and it's just remained in place. It was set, uh, for twenty thousand dollars in engineering in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, so starting July first. And then it was set to start actual construction or striping, uh, with seventy thousand dollars budgeted towards it in twenty-three, twenty-four. So that is on our CIP. It's been on the CIP for those years for, uh, I think it goes back four or five years. And so we are looking at how we can coordinate that. I think, um, uh, our plan was to do some design work on it that would time up, uh, with this. Uh, but we didn't have the construction funds set this fiscal year yet. Uh, so there's going to be some, there's going to be some, um, uh, decision-making, I think, as part of the CIP where we'll have to get a, um, a, kind of walk through that with the city council and decide whether to move some projects around or whether to do that the year after. But as of right now, the funding for that project is in twenty-three, twenty-four, uh, which starts July first, twenty-twenty-three.
Bill?
Yeah, I wanted to, um, I guess, might seem like we're piling on here, but I think it's an important point. This, this illustration here is really an important point to discuss. All the things that Councilperson Haney started, Councilman, uh, Person Francina talked about because this is part of our general plan. Let's remind ourselves. The Complete Streets Master Plan, uh, was published in June twenty-seventeen, was adopted by the city council in September of twenty-seventeen. This has been on the books for a while, both in terms of taking advantage of, uh, stormwater capture and retention, uh, for, uh, and we know much more about the advantages of doing that and the ways to do that where the opportunities are in town, and the, the modal emphasis for, uh, the bike trails that we established by city council into our general plan in twenty-seventeen. So when opportunities like this arise, the, the point that I want to try to make is that, uh, it's more cost-effective to pursue general plan consistency by trying to maybe, uh, uh, deal with this kind of situation as part of the paving program than just say, we're going to do it separately in a piecemeal fashion. And I'm not trying to displace the, this work in the paving program, but I do think that we maybe need to up the, um, uh, focus on how we can pursue the general plan consistency when these types of opportunities arise. And that's the point I really wanted to make.
Okay. Um, look, thank you. Um, can we just, uh, keep it to questions at this point and not, uh, veer into discussion? Um, you have a question?
Of course I do.
Let's hear it.
I do. Or was it certainly? Um, no, what I wanted to say was, um, you know, I kind of initiated that going outside of the, um, the Q and A, and I, and I just wanted to bring it back. You're right. A lot of this is, it should be part of the discussion afterwards. Let, let's let Alma, um, proceed. So I agree with you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. So the next type of treatment is the hot mix asphalt overlay with a two and a half inch thickness, and that will be primarily on the section of Fairview Road on the outer limits of the street up to the city limit for a cost of fifty-five thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars. Here's a little section of Fairview Road. You can see the trenching, utility trench scars and potholes and cracking that have been sealed.
Do you happen to know the right-of-way here rather than the width of the, compared to the width of the pavement?
I would have to look it up on the map.
Okay. I, I don't, I don't, I don't want to displace you. No. All right.
The next type of treatment would be a full mill. That is where they grind out the entire top, uh, the entire surface of the street and replace it with a hot mix asphalt overlay of one and a half inch thickness. And that is the entire length of Lion Street from Oak Street to Grand Avenue. Wait, from Aliso to, let me look at that. It's from Aliso to Grand Avenue. And that's for a total cost of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and ninety-two Uh, this was a picture that I pulled off Google Earth, right where the Lion Street Bridge is. You can see some potholes and, because he just recently did some work on there. So it's, it's in rougher shape than what you see on the image right now. The, I think this is the last treatment. Uh, the, the last one is a hot mix asphalt overlay for a one and a half inch thickness, and that will be primarily on Kuyama and West Eucalyptus Street for a cost of forty-eight thousand, eighty-one dollars. And that is a section of Kuyama Road. You can see the utility trenching scars from a water line So this is, uh, something important that I want to impress upon council. And it's, it's a deterioration curve that shows how pavement condition affects the cost to treat it. So if we, I'm going to use the mouse for this. Starting, if, if we were to choose to pave our streets when they are between excellent and good condition, it wouldn't be paving. It would be some type of rejuvenation or preservation treatment that's added to the street to rejuvenate it and add another five to seven years of service life to the road. Those types of treatments typically cost anywhere from one to two dollars per square foot. If we were to choose to defer maintenance of the road when the road is between good and fair condition, the costs begin to increase. And so does the type, the, the type of treatment changes because now you would need some type of resurfacing at a cost of two to three dollars per square foot. If we continue to defer any kind of road maintenance to when the street is in fair to poor condition, then you're going to need some type of major rehabilitation at an estimated cost of three to five dollars per square foot. If we were to continue down and do, to do nothing and pave the streets to where they are below the poor condition, that's where you really see your maintenance costs skyrocketing to six to twelve dollars per square foot. And those are estimated guesses. So the takeaway from this is that it's better to preserve your good streets in good condition because it is much more cost-effective. It extends the life significantly in your streets. You end up with a better road network, better streets, quieter roads, and just reduce costs in maintaining it.
Can I add to you just to that? That's why, when we talked about our, the five-year plan we're developing, once this one is complete, and we talked about trying to do one point two million to get the streets into the good range, with the idea being that after five years, the cost would drop substantially because we'd, it would just be light maintenance on all the streets.
It would just be light maintenance, and our average PQI should increase to over seventy, uh, which would make us comparable to the other cities that have better pavement than what we currently have right now. Question?
True question. Alma, are we facing a bit of a cost twenty-two trade-off where we're maybe cutting back on preservation we should maybe be doing now in order to get caught up, thereby letting some of the things that are good to go to fair while we get up caught, caught up with the really bad stuff? I mean, uh, where are we on that in terms of what the best practices would be right now if we didn't have the pressure to reconstruct bad in terms of, uh, preservation, to extend life versus trying to get caught up? You understand my question?
Uh, I believe so. Uh, so the, the map that was created originally, just letting the computer model do, work through its decision tree was very different than what we have here as the streets that we had already committed to. The cost to, we, we ended up with more road segments, more centerline miles that we could have paved for a cost of one point four million. But we have already committed to these streets, and we'd like to finish it out. That's why the cost is so high. Going forward, when we do implement our multi-year pavement plan, the, the focus is going to be on keeping our roads, our good roads in good condition and incorporating the bad ones as we pave so that we really maximize the amount of budget we have and keep,
Right.
Just increase our PQI score.
Can I follow up?
Go ahead.
Do we have any, then, a sense of, let's just say budget wasn't a problem. Budget's always a problem. Okay? I'm not saying, I'm not trying to make light of that. But what, what degree of best practices preservation are we not doing in order to try to get caught up? Can we have, if we, when we ballpark that?
I don't have a ballpark estimate on that.
Okay.
Yeah, we looked at, we looked at the computer model, like, like, almost the computer says if, you know, without taking into account anything else, here's where you get the, the most efficiency for your, the budget.
For the dollars available.
And I would say it was like fifty percent the same streets, you know, ball roughly, and fifty percent different streets. Um, and so, you know, the, the idea, I think the positive thing to keep in mind, and it was part of why we wanted to set this up with the comment about funding every year for this, is that in the past, we'd have to make this decision, and then it would be three or four years before we could afford to pave again. Now, if we're paving every year, we can catch up on some really poor quality streets this year, and the next year, start that regular maintenance. So.
Yep.
James, um, in the past, didn't we do, um, CIP funding along with grants?
Mm-hmm.
So grants are still available?
Yes.
To, um, to incorporate?
Yes.
That's the one question. The second question is, um, do we ever coordinate our overlays or our repairs with the county? So for instance, Fairview is a big sticking point because half of it's county and half is city. And the people that live in the county side participate hugely in, in our community. So they're always calling me about, how can you fix my street? And it's like, when you get the address, you go, well, that's a county.
Yeah.
So the question would be, how can we coordinate that better?
Mm-hmm.
That's something that we should, we should look at.
Yeah. Thank you.
And, and it, this, the, the final question is, when we, when, and I'm sure we'll discuss it, discuss it later, Mayor. The, the other question is, when we are doing these overlays, is it the appropriate time to take back the road? When we can? And I think that that's, you know, that, that's a, probably a, a big political question because we, those are fighting words. Um, but the, the, the question is, is that the time to consider it and to incorporate public, larger public comment into that process when we're at that point?
Okay. Thank you. I think, um, I'll try to go through them in order. Yes, we still get grants, and we also still get certain other funding, like tax funding. Um, I think this year, what we looked at was about one point two-five, uh, million Measure C and about six hundred thousand, all other sources. And so I think, I, I do want to point that out because I think a lot of people think that all the paving is done by the gas tax. And we actually get a very small percentage. I think it's some, I think,
Two hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, two hundred and fifty thousand, but that was like three years built up. So if we were only paving with gas tax, like I think people think, we'd be back to the paving level we were two thousand and two. Yeah. So, um, so we still would be going for those with our grant writers. We already, we're talking to them about applying for some grants too, which, um, could help pay for it. So we'd still be looking to leverage funds. That's something we'd still try to do. Coordination with the county, uh, I started to respond and, and I'm, uh, uh, but you, you asked a little question, a different question than I expected. We definitely coordinate with the other agencies, and I know Alma's working with that, with, um, Casitas and Sanitary District. I'm not sure if we've coordinated with the county. They've, they called recently about Fairview, but was it about paving?
They, it was not about paving, and it was related to Fairview and what they are doing. If anybody's been out there, there's a speed trailer set up collecting traffic data.
Mm-hmm.
For what purpose? Um, I, I don't know the exact purpose, but I, I'm suspecting they're trying to pave that section of the road.
Yeah. So we can try to, we could coordinate with that with them, I think, is, is, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to them this week on that. And then about whether it's the appropriate time to talk about taking back, you know, right-of-ways and, and what have you. I think this year, I know I keep repeating, but this year's closing out the thirteen-year-old cycle. But we're going to bring the pavement management plan back, I think, three to four months is what I think will bring it in preparation to next year. So I think when we bring that pavement management plan back and we are talking about, um, our, our plans for the next five years, that would probably be an appropriate time to start talking about which streets we want to do that for.
Thank you.
And just to clarify, tonight, the one point eight million has been set aside by the budget committee just strictly for paving, correct?
Well, it's set aside by the council, but the budget committee recommended.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And, and just to, um, clarify, Alma, what you're saying is that if we take care of our streets now, we will save money in the future in the long haul. So we'll have money to do other things, right?
That's correct. And then something interesting that I recently found out, if we are able to get our PQI score over eighty, the SB one funding that's traditionally used for street paving can be used for other transportation projects. It doesn't need to be used strictly for paving once your PQI goes over eighty.
Exciting.
The city of Thousand Oaks uses that extensively.
Yeah. So there's an added benefit to keeping our streets in good condition.
Yes. Um, and,
And then, um, that was the last slide I had.
Okay. Thank you so much, Alma. Fabulous. Thank you. Um, any other questions from council? Souza or, or, uh, Ryan?
Raising his hand. I always see the raised hand.
Uh, we all, can we go back to, uh, can we find Sue on the screen?
I'm, oh, can you, uh, can you hear me? Oh, never mind.
Yes, we can hear you.
Derek took his hand down. That was all.
Okay. No questions, Souza?
Uh, uh, no, not right now.
Oh, okay. All right. Um, let's move on to public comments. We have two public comments. Uh, we have Jeffrey Starkweather and Bill Miley.
You may have already answered one of my questions, but looking at these maps, uh, the brown one, I see the quality of the streets, and I was trying to match them with the streets that you were paving. And I s, and I'm wondering about the criteria. I And I s, and I'm wondering about the criteria. I assume it has something to do with the amount of traffic on it because like Grand and Fairview, which are fair, are being paved and other streets which are poor are not. And the other one, which particularly I noticed, because I have a friend that lives on that street and complains all the time about the traffic is Drowned Street, and I noticed that's in poor shape or whether the, failed, that's failed. And that's, uh, it's a, it's a street, according to people that live on it, a lot of people use it to get around downtown. So it gets, gets traffic beyond its own, uh, resonance. And, uh, I had a couple of other things. Um, so that's just a question. Uh, I do agree very strongly with, uh, what Souza and Bill said about tying it in with complete streets because I've had experience back in North Carolina where the planning commission and the paving and so, they were not coordinated. They actually in one, in our town, they had to tear up sidewalks because they had to expand the street. So it really makes, saves a lot of money, uh, if you do it in a coordinated fashion. This other thing is, this is just an idea, but I've seen it where it really works and I thought about this on Drowned Street. When you have an intersection, uh, you know, those four-way intersections, if it's a street that people move too fast on, if you make your, your crosswalk like a, like a raised thing, it really slows down cars. I know you can't put it in the middle of the street, but if you can do it at certain, if you have certain streets where people are complaining about people going too fast, if you make this like a raised sidewalk, it's not like dangerous or anything, but the top of it is where you walk across. It is really a, a really nice thing to have. I mean, you could even have it in downtown. And the final thing is, was raised about the county. I would highly recommend that somebody always go to those MAC meetings, Municipal Advisory Council, because we have found lately, and I found back in the dark skies thing, that that's a group of people that can lobby on behalf of the whole valley to get our supervisor to pay attention to that. In the last several months, I've gone to them all and raised several, it's Bill Wyrick, I think has been in a couple. And that's a really useful vehicle to try to push our supervisors or the county to be working in coordination because we're one valley. I mean, it's an invisible line, even though technically it's a geographic, I mean, it's a, it's a, um, legal line. It's not the reality of where we live in. So thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Uh, next we have Bill Miley.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I too, um, noticed that Drowned Avenue was black. A pavement quality index of twenty or less. And so I wrote an email to, um, City Manager, Mr. Vega, and he replied. And this is kind of what I remember. Um, he, in reading, uh, Mr. Vega's email, he said that the Drowned Avenue, um, redoing was going to probably come up in May and that there would be a separate focus on that. That's what I understood. So I'm looking forward to that, to, for your, for your comment. Also, it seems, am I correct in that, um, Alma, that a speed factor is really important in pavement condition? And the faster they go, the more the pavement is stressed. So if we lo, we lowered our speed limit from thirty to twenty-five on Grand Avenue example, it might last longer. In fact, some of the streets that are in fair condition right now and are not going to be treated for a couple of years, maybe if their limit was thirty and we reduced it to twenty-five, we could get a few more years before we had to repave it. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments on Zoom, Gil? Hi, Chet.
I came down to, to speak about, hi Alma, congratulations. Public Works has always been a challenge as far as streets go in the city. But I wanted to, to mention, in front of my house, it's, it's, um, it's an election year and everybody wants to fit, fix the potholes, right? But in front of, in front of my house on Grand Avenue, two twelve, it's bad. And I mean, I find hunks of street in my yard and today I found a piece of tire. And it's, it's, um, it's the main street, basically, when Main Street is full. So if there's something you can do, I noticed it's not on here. If there's something you can do to, to fix the potholes on, at least in front of our neighbor's house, in my house, on that stretch, that would be great. And also there's a couple of holes that are developing where they've done water projects, uh, Casitas has, and they're starting to sink. One of them is at the top of, I think Fulton Street, and the other one's right by the big oak tree in front of the Gables or the Gardens. And that can be easily repaired. But I noticed now people are starting to drive around them into oncoming traffic and that's not good. So, um, if there's something you can do in the meantime, you know, until years out, when you pave these streets, if there's something that you can keep them patched together, and I know the Public Works guys are so busy, they work really hard, but if there's something we can do better to keep it glued together until they do get fixed, that would be great because I have prime real estate in front of my house for yard signs for campaigning.
Thank you, Chet. Any, uh, comments on Zoom, Gil?
If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on this item, please use the raised hand function now. We have one person, Mr. Steingold. You can speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself and you can go ahead.
Yes, thank you, uh, thank you very much. I do bike all over town and the fact that you're doing the roads is a wonderful thing. I always take photographs of where there are holes and you can send them to City Hall. And Public Works does a wonderful job getting out there and repairing them. I would suggest on Grand, though, there are holes be, beginning to develop that they should see and fill up prior, before they get worse. And I think that's one of the things that Public Works and the whole city can do or anybody can do. Just take photographs and send them in and no repair them. I mean, but they're doing a good job and I think it's a wonderful thing and please keep up the work and I've got signs, I got a location too for signs, especially for Pleasant that needs to get done. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. All right, uh, we'll move on to discussion.
Mayor, can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Kind of respond to a couple. Uh, Mr. Steingold stole my, uh, response, but I was going to say, we did the report last week on my Ojai. And I think we reported, we had like a hundred and eighty potholes filled, you know, pictures there, so. So for sure, keep sending those in, but we'll also have Pub, uh, Public Works, uh, check out some of the areas mentioned like Grand because there is pothole repair we can do in the meantime. The, the question, uh, Mr. Starkweather answered or asked, I think was a good question. I just wanted to, uh, speak to it because the staff report speaks a little bit to it. But it goes with the, the whole thing we were saying of, uh, we decided to finish out the last plan and we, uh, and so what we're paving is finishing out the 2013 plan. But we also have started the work on analyzing the streets and so that's where there's a little bit, um, uh, of, I think, some questions about some of the streets that are in poor condition but weren't on the 2013 plan. And so we mentioned in the report, there's two streets that are large chunks that, uh, are large sections of the street that are failed quality that are not in the plan. And it's North Drowned Avenue and then Fairway Lane are the two big sections that are failing that are not on our current plan. And so those, we've recommended adding those as ad alternates to the bid. And so, so that, um, as, as we get the bid back, we can determine if there's funding to do that. Uh, and so that was, um, uh, somewhat spoken to in the report. And then as Mr. Miley mentioned, we had talked about, um, coming back as part of the C I P to talk more in-depth about Drown and some of the other improvements, so. Um, so I just wanted to explain that, so.
Thank you, James. Uh, Bill?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to Chet's comment, um, that the issue of another agency going into our streets and then having slumping from their work in many ways is a city code inspection issue. We are supposed to have inspectors out there making sure that the best practices are used in terms of how the, the T milling is done, how the compaction is done. And if it's a failure there of, uh, the other agency's work, I would urge us to be quite aggressive in saying, "Agency, you did not do your work properly. We ought to take a look at why our inspectors maybe didn't make sure it got done right." Um, and not just, uh, incorporate it in terms of something to repair with a taxpayer expense when it's, uh, that other agency's responsibility to fix that, in my opinion.
Yeah, thank you. And, yeah, we, we, uh, uh, the council about a year ago, I think, created a full-time Public Works inspector position with that focus in mind, so we're, we're working on that, so.
So we're into, we're going to discuss this?
We're in discussion right now.
I, I just wanted to clarify, so we're, we're going to finish the thirteen-year plan. Um, the next phase is the five-year plan. Okay, and to me, the interim between those two might be some way of you coming back to the, um, worst-rated streets, which we're going to call the fail, the P Q, the P Q I at a twenty rating, correct?
Correct.
And maybe we, um, you know, maybe when you come, come back, that we'd look at that as a lump sum pavement year project and we get, we find out what it would cost to actually get the worst up completely on next year's budget and then look at the long-term of incorporating the complete streets guidelines into the paving process, um, and come up with a more clear and concise way of doing this. I think someone asked earlier about how do we deter, well, this street is fair and we're redoing it and this street is poor and we, and we're not touching it. And trust me, for seven years, I asked Ray Grant the same question. What's the criteria? So I'm, I'm going to trust you, Alma, and I'm going to trust James, that we're going to have a better way of doing this and a better way that the community can understand why we're doing it, how we're doing it, when we're doing it and where we're doing it. Um, because for the seven years I've been here, I'm lost every year this comes up. Um, because we're paving streets that we paved three years ago. Now, I get it that some streets have more traffic than others. I, I understand that. Grand obviously would be one of them. But that doesn't mean that some of these streets, eh, you know, shouldn't be looked at. And I think another one of the issues we had is when we do streets, um, the move-on cost. And then we would move on to a street that had three, um, cul-de-sacs in conjunction and we wouldn't do the cul-de-sacs. And I used to scratch my head at that. It's like, you moved all of this equipment onto this street. What does it take to do those three cul-de-sacs in those streets? And so, again, I'm looking at, at, at more coherency into the who, what, why, and how. I trust you two completely, um, like you said, just watching what you did, um, with the vehicles and the fact that you're thinking forward, the fact that you already are contacting the county about other issues. So I, I look forward to that. But again, I think if we got this, if we got these black lines on this plan in front of us, it's a no-brainer to actually assess that and say, what would one year of paving budget with as many grances that we could, that we could come up with? How can we solve that problem immediately, bring all of those up to a higher level than, than seventy? And boom, now we're off and running on that five-year plan to get all the streets into that seventy rating. So that would be my, my take.
I'll wait later.
No comments? Anyone? Go ahead, Bill.
Um, I, yeah, again, just to further comment on that, I think it's extremely important, since we are so committed in this community to sustainable community design, that it's also important that we pursue it, not just aggressively, but as a cost-effectively as we can. And that means when there are opportunities, either for stormwater management, and we have a lot more information on that than we ever did in terms of where those opportunities arise. I mean, I'll mention Lion Street, for example. That's goes over natural stream course. Are we maximizing the water that we're stormwater managing into that natural stream course in this design? Uh, or, uh, the example we had there for ground, uh, any street in particular that is in the modal emphasis charts in our Complete Streets Master Plan, as we move forward, and again, I'm emphasizing moving forward, we really, uh, need to take a more holistic view in order to cost-effectively get serious about sustainable community design. The infrastructure for, uh, a bicycle, uh, transportation as well as the, uh, uh, better capture of stormwater and recharge, particularly of, uh, the kind of recharge that enhances storm, uh, stream water, um, or, or, uh, you know, stream flow. And I just, uh, the last thing I would, I would just like to say is that I'm, uh, very much in favor of the ad alternates approach to this. If there are some, uh, opportunities like what we saw there on Grand for an ad alternate to, uh, in terms of enhancing the modal emphasis aspect, uh, I would, I'm definitely one vote in favor of, of having ad alternates in this cycle. And, um, just for that flexibility, uh, so we have, that's included in the bid process.
I'll, I'll wait for the other two, Mayor.
Ryan, Souza, anything?
Oh, I, I just would like to express my full support for everything that Councilmember Wyrick just said. Thank you.
Thank you, Souza. And, and just to confirm, though, tonight is just paving, so.
This is paving. I think, um, if, if, uh, we have a couple of ad alternates, so if council wanted to add the ad alternate of the Grand to bike lanes, I think we could, we could at least get that in the bid, so that'd be one option.
Okay. Ready for motion?
Um, if Ryan's, I have one more comment.
Okay, go ahead. He's good. Ryan, you good?
Okay, um, so the, um, my final thoughts on this also is, um, if I remember correctly, we kinda, we pulled, we pulled Drown out of the conversation. We've created a, um, uh, its own assessment because of the severity of its, of, of its problems. Um, and I believe we're bringing that back when we discuss C I P and the additional C I P funding that's available. We might be able to identify how we might do some, um, different types of repair, short-term, midterm, and long-term. So I'm looking forward to that conversation. Okay?
Well, I'll make a motion to authorize staff to proceed with the preparation of the 2022 paving project. Exciting. Okay, uh, roll call, please, Gil?
Uh, could I, could I ask if we, uh, would that motion include, uh, the ad alternates that we've discussed? Okay.
All right, roll call, please, Gil.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Potemhany?
Yes.
Councilmember Wyrick?
Yes.
Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Great. All right, well, uh, move on to discussion item number three, the City of Ojai crime statistics for 2021. Take it away, chief.
Yeah, and I think, um, we have the chief's PowerPoint here. Let me pull that up real quick.
I too, like Alma, this would be my first presentation to council. Thanks to COVID.
Hey, you've only had three years here, right?
Yeah.
And like Alma, you've got this, chief.
Well, while we're opening this up, I do, uh, the first slide I snuck in on the chief is, um, the chief and I are planning to do, um, we had done the community conversation in January and we had talked about, uh, having some future opportunities to, to have some community conversations. And so we are planning the, um, to hold the next one. It'll be informal, but just having a, uh, kind of a question and answer session at Libby Park on Wednesday, May eighteenth at eight-thirty a.m. And, um, that'll be up here on the first slide, once I can get this to work. I think my Zoom closed.
By the way, James, you got tons, you, you and the chief both got tons of rave, rave reviews. They
Oh, thank you.
Loved it.
Oh, we hope to do another one soon.
Yeah.
They loved it.
It closed. Okay, James, can you pull up the, uh, mayor's presentation? The Zoom closed on this laptop when we handed it over, so. Okay, so, um, that's the slide, just, uh, giving the details for that meeting. And so we'll put that on the website and, uh, the chief and I, it'll be informal, we'll just that on the website, and the chief and I, it'll be informal, we'll just meet with some coffee and some chairs out at Libby Park, and we'll be happy to, to take any questions or comments, so. But with that, each year, we typically report out on, on the crime statistics for the year. We haven't done it a couple of years, as the chief mentioned, so I'll turn it over to the chief.
Very good, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and members of the public. Thank you for the opportunity for me to present the 2021 crime stats for the City of Ojai. So I'd like to start off, crime stats are first divided into two major groups. One is part one crimes, and the other is part two. Part one crimes obviously are more serious crimes, and they're divided into two categories. One is crimes against, violent crimes against persons, and the other is crimes against property. So included in this presentation, you'll see some percentage changes between 2020 and 2021. The percentage changes may, in some instances, appear very high, very low, and that is due to the number of crimes that are reported. Here in the City of Ojai, we've been very fortunate to have very low crime stats, so any changes will create a very high percentage or a very low percentage. So like to start off with crimes against persons, so in attachment A and B, it shows a three-year comparison of part one crimes. In 2021, we had a 100% increase in crimes against persons, so keeping in mind with what I just said, compared to 2020, there was an increase of three cases in 2021. So in 2021, we had a total of six cases, part one crimes against persons. Crimes against property, we did have a decrease of 20 cases in 2021, 19% decrease. Some of the highs and lows in this category are grand thefts increased by 10 cases, while our petty theft cases decreased by 22 cases. We had six reported arson cases in which we made several arrests. These arsons occurred in our parks, Libby Parks, Arizodi, and the Skate Park. And they mainly consisted of trashcan fires, toilet paper rolls being lit on fire with minimal damage. We've been very fortunate. The majority of the theft-related cases were crimes of opportunity. And what I mean by that is a lot of times, folks leave their cars unlocked, and we have individuals that go down the street checking doors to see if they're unlocked. They find one unlocked, they go into, into the vehicle, and they scavenge anything they can out of the vehicle. Other, other crimes that I saw on a more frequent basis is unattended property being left out, and another prime opportunity for somebody just to take it, bicycles, tools in the trucks was probably pretty common. And a lot of these crimes occurred in the beginning of the year, and they decreased towards the close of the year. Now, you may be wondering, well, what, what's the difference here? What, what caused the decrease, you know, when, when there was an increase in the beginning of the year? A lot of it was putting out information on social media. I think that really helped. Engaging the community, providing information, hey, these are the crime trends that we're seeing, and this is what you can do to prevent being a victim. That really helped us out a lot. A lot of it also included identifying certain areas that were being targeted and sending the deputies out there to kind of focus in those areas during their shifts, to make contacts, and if need be, make arrests on any, on any violations. So that really helped decrease a lot of these, especially the petty crime thefts toward the end of the year. Attachment C, which is the, I believe, the next slide. So this is the graph of the comparisons for the part one crimes, and this is a three-year comparison. And it just, it was from the numbers from the previous slide. So, next slide, please. And attachment C, it's kind of hard to see, but it is a 30-year historical perspective of part one crimes in the city. And to kind of put things in perspective, in 1991, there was a total of 350 part one crimes reported, compared to in 2021, last year, we had 92 crimes. So during the same period, our crime rate dropped from 46.2 crimes per thousand persons in 1991 to 12.4 crimes in 2021. So we've made a lot of strides since then, so we're hopefully to continue the downward trend. Now, to our part two crimes, part two crimes are all the other crimes that are not included in part one crime categories. These are crimes such as simple assaults, sex offenses, not including rape, vandalism's, drug offenses, and all other crimes. So in 2021, we had an increase of 80%, which equates to an additional 145 cases, and a total of, for a total of 325. The majority of the increases are attributed to vandalism's. We had 35 cases last year. And all other reported crime, we had a total of 113 cases. All other reported crime includes crimes such as trespassing, illegal dumping, elder abuse, child crimes, and also city municipal code violations that are not categorized in part one or two crimes. In 2021, we did have 100 municipal code violations that were cited out, and I'll discuss those in, in just a bit. Arrests for 2021, we had a slight decrease by 7.5%, a difference of 31 arrests for the year, compared, when you compare it to the previous year. In 2021, we made a total of 340 misdemeanor arrests, 36 felony arrests. 18 of those misdemeanor arrests were for DUI-related offenses, and 23 for being under the influence of drugs. The majority of those misdemeanor cases, the subjects were cited and released instead of being booked into jail because of the restrictions we had due to COVID in, in our So let me discuss the municipal code violations. Attachment F, which is the next slide. Oh, I'm sorry, that was the part one, part two crimes. Next slide, please. And that was arrests. Next one, please. Okay. Municipal code violations, so we, in 2021, there were 100 code violations that were cited out. The majority of those cases were for drinking in public. There were 77 offenses for drinking in public, and a majority of those cases occurred in the downtown area and within our parks. I'm hoping, my hope is that with the increase in foot patrols, the increased presence in the, in these areas, that these offenses will be reduced. I think the more they see the officers around, that they know the deputies are going to be foot patrolling the area, they're going to be less likely to create these, or commit these offenses. Attachment G, please, or next slide. And these are the calls for service for the entire year. We had a total of 300 and, or, I'm sorry, 3,535 calls for service. Where did I have that? I must be missing a page. All right, I'm, I'm missing a page in my notes. Anyways, we had 3,303, or 535 calls for service. The majority of them were disturbance calls, suspicious circumstances, and the other one was for non-criminal-type cases. Now, the one that's pretty interesting and suspicious circumstance calls, these are calls from the public whenever they see or hear something that just doesn't sound right to them, so they call us to come out and, and investigate. What I like about this, and I'm hoping this number goes even up higher, is because majority of the time, we come out, we investigate these type of calls, and there, there's nothing foul. And that's great, but it's those few times that we do come out, we do find something going on, where we're able to prevent a crime, prevent somebody from being hurt, that makes a huge difference. So, you know, we can't be everywhere, but the more people that we have out there listening, looking out their windows when, when they hear something and they call us, we're able to come out and investigate. So I encourage everybody to do that. If you see something, hear something, then give us a call and let us come out to, to investigate these incidents. So like I mentioned, 3,535 calls for service, it's a decrease of 85 calls compared to 2020. And as you know, 2020 was kind of a, a very strange year, something we've never probably ever seen before, and I hope we never do again. But we're not really sure how, how much it impacted our crime stats because we were locked down for, for quite a bit. I know it impacted our, our traffic when I compared it from 2019, 2020, and 2021. Our traffic stats actually went down, traffic accidents were down in 2020, because everybody was home, nobody was out on the road. So we're, we're still kind of looking at that, see how much of an impact it had. Next slide, please. Next slide is our response times, and whenever somebody calls our dispatch center, depending on the circumstances of the call, a call is placed into a category of priority. So priority one being the most serious type of call, it's either a threat to life, somebody's being injured, or, you know, a threat to property, an in-progress type call would probably get a priority one call, that means lights and sirens, you're, you're sending somebody right away to that call. So we, we kind of gauge what our average response time is in the city for those type of calls. Priority one calls in the city, average five minutes, 5.83 minutes per call for the year. So just over five minutes, we're able to get to, to these priority calls. Priority two calls, no lights or siren, you're kind of responding with the flow of traffic to these type of calls, they're just above 12 minutes. And priority three calls, less of a priority, you're, you're getting there right around 14 minutes. And priority four calls, they may let pen, depending on what's going on. So there's a little bit more time there that it will take a deputy to get to that particular Next slide, please. And council, if you have questions about anything, please feel free to ask. Vehicle code violations, so we do get a lot of complaints about traffic, specifically speeding in the city. We don't have a dedicated deputy strictly assigned to traffic enforcement. So the traffic enforcement duties, responsibilities are put upon the, the two beat deputies. So in between all their other responsibilities, they try to manage doing enforcement as well. We try to target some areas that are high in traffic at certain times of the day or, or the evening to ensure that accidents are, you know, reduced in those areas. So during 2021, deputies issued a total, totals issued citations for a total of 771 different traffic violations. Believe it or not, this is a decrease compared to the previous year by 137 violations. If you look and you add them up, there's 163 violations that were issued, citations were issued for using wireless devices. Now, you think, what, well, you know, what's the big deal about somebody picking up their phone or using their phone while they're driving? To me, that's probably one of the most, the biggest causes to accidents in our city because it's, it's an attention. You, you take your attention away from what you're looking at in front of your vehicle, even for a split second, you know, things can, can happen right away. And that's probably the, the major cause of accidents in our city is just in attention. It's not so much the speeding or anything like that, but it, it is, you, you take your eyes off the road and you're not prepared to, with what's going to happen. So there were also other violations, 92 violations for failing stop for a stop sign, or 92 violations, 47 for unsafe speed, so speeding. The highlighted sections that I have in the PowerPoint are some of those that I feel are associated with traffic collisions, they're moving violations or driving under the influence of drugs or alcohol. So these, these are some of the factors that contribute to our accidents here in the city. Next slide, please. And these.
Susa has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Susa?
Oh, oh, on the previous slide, first of all, I'm just thrilled that you're citing people for texting and looking at their devices. Do you have any idea of the age range? Is it all ages or newly licensed drivers?
Probably everybody.
And, and you're saying that your deputies observe, observe this as they're watching traffic, they're observing, and then following up?
Correct. And I don't have an age range, it's, it's different ages, it doesn't specifically target a particular age range. And we, we have been very fortunate where I've been able to pull resources from other stations, the motor units that have come up here to work overtime out of a traffic grant. And they, they, there, it's a lot easier to move around on a motorcycle, especially on the weekends when we know it, it just gets packed, especially down the main road. They're able to maneuver, they're able to, you know, pull up next to somebody and they're on their phone. So they do observe all these violations, and they, they've been very diligent about issuing citations.
I think that's absolutely great. Thank you.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
Chief, one point real quick to the age range question, because it used to be the story was it was young people that were on their phones, but I don't think that's true anymore.
No, it's, it's all ages. It's all ages. Unfortunately, but that, that's just the case. Like I mentioned, we, we did deploy in 2021 additional traffic enforcement resources from other stations, which has helped us out tremendously because they're able to focus just on strictly traffic enforcement. These, unfortunately, these resources are not always available, they have other commitments, but they, they do try to get up here as much as possible. And I think that's really helped with our enforcement of traffic here in the city. Next slide, please. And that's just the end of the traffic citations that we issued. Next slide, please. So traffic collisions. So if you look at the, the PowerPoint displayed, it, it shows there was an increase in 2021, or 2021 in traffic collisions. So we had a total of 62 traffic accidents compared to 43 in 2020. Now, keep in mind, in 2020, we were locked down. There was a period of time where you hardly saw a vehicle on the road, so that really decreased our accidents. I look back at 2019, in 2019, we had 68 traffic accidents. So we kind of, we're, we're kind of in line with, with 2019. 2020 was just an anomaly, and, and I, like I said, I- 2020 was just an anomaly and, like I said, I hope it never, ever happens again. That was horrible. So. Both. I don't want to go through that again. So traffic was really low, so our stats for 2020 came out really low and they bumped back up after everything started to open up in 2021. But we're starting to target some of the areas that we see a lot of accidents at. One of the major spots is the Y, you know, and that's kind of a hub for traffic there. We're getting traffic in different directions. You've got a lot of stuff going on there and the inattention kind of plays into it and that's when we have accidents. But next slide, please. So some of the things that we're working on for this year. So we're going to continue high visibility patrols. We're going to target the areas that we're starting to see crime pop up and address those issues. I think by seeing a lot of patrols in the area, I think those that are out there committing crimes, they see this, they're either not going to do it or go somewhere else. Hopefully, they just leave the city. Additional traffic enforcement, we're going to continue utilizing the other resources to help us with traffic enforcement in the city. And hopefully, that kind of reduces our traffic accidents. I did apply for a traffic grant this year. It's something that we haven't done before. And I just took a shot and they did accept our proposal. And I'm just waiting to hear back how much money we're going to get. So we're going to utilize that for additional traffic enforcement in the city. Foot patrols. Recently, we started foot patrolling the downtown area on the weekends and the parks as well. And I've talked to some of the officers that have done the foot patrols and they've actually had some of the merchants come up and ask them, hey, what's wrong? What's going on? And they've told them, hey, we're just out here kind of engaging with the community. You'll see us more often, which is good. I like that they're being seen out there, they're getting engaged by the community. That was what I wanted, you know, just to have that presence there. Bicycle patrols. I tried them in the downtown area and I just felt they weren't that effective, especially on a bike. I think it's good to have them nearby in case you do need to get on a bike and get to a certain area. But patrolling on a bike, especially downtown and in the parks, I think it's more effective on foot. And you kind of lose that face-to-face engagement with the community if you're on a bike and you're moving, rather than somebody walking by, walking up to you and asking you a question or something like that. So I'm really, I'm going to focus on the foot patrols in that area more often than not. Community engagement, like James mentioned, we're going to do the coffee with the city manager and the chief this month. And I'd like to have a few more of those with our deputies at different establishments so the community can come out and meet them and, you know, ask questions and they get to meet the deputies that are out patrolling their neighborhoods. And they're able to develop those relationships with those deputies. Public service messaging, videos, and social media. Last year, we did a lot of public service videos. We did one on crosswalk safety. I think we did another one on how to prevent crime and locking up your cars, things like that. We have a few other topics that we're going to push out. I have a sergeant that does the videos. He likes doing these videos, so we're going to push a few more of those out and kind of gear them in line with some of the issues that we're seeing in the city, just to put them out for the public to see and educate them as well. City beat coordinator, I did select a deputy to be our first city beat coordinator, so he will be the liaison with the community to put out public messaging, also answer any questions that the community may have, be accessible by email, telephone, things like that. And we'll probably bring him to some of the public meetings and get him engaged that way. We're going to try to get him some training this next week at some of the other stations and hopefully he'll bring back some pretty good ideas that we can utilize here in the city. We're going to be partnering up with the city for different events. We started doing that last year once COVID restrictions started lifting up. We had a great time. We did the Centennial Ojai Day and we hope to do a lot more events this year. And since now we're kind of, all the restrictions are being lifted, so I think the public really likes to see us out there and engage us and ask a lot of questions, which is good. And continue homeless outreach. So we're working with, I have two deputies that are assigned to homeless outreach here in the city. It's a collateral assignment for them, so they're not strictly doing homeless outreach. They do that as part of their regular duties. But they've also partnered up with, the sheriff's department has a homeless liaison unit now, which takes deputies from each station and they go around to different stations or cities to assist with outreach, getting resources out to those that need it and will accept it. The biggest part is trying to get them to accept resources. And sometimes it takes some convincing, you know, just continual outreach to them and contact, and finally, they gain some confidence and they accept some of the services and we're able to help them out that way. So just some of the things that we're looking at for next year. Next slide, please.
Can I ask you about the homeless outreach?
Yes.
Could that include something as simple as a handout that directs them to where we offer free food, showers, you know, so that it doesn't have to be just, you know, something simple? And, you know, and it's an excuse also for the police, for your deputy to engage with, you know, if they see someone sleeping on a bench in the park, or I've seen homeless people sleeping on a bench in the, you know, in the laundromat, for example. Because we really don't have a very, I mean, maybe I'm out of the loop, but with the family services, you know, that's only in the winter months. I just want to make sure that there's not a homeless person in Ojai going hungry, that there is a way, as far as I know, there's still, you can still go to, it used to be the help office on Fox Street where you could go get food.
Yes, and I believe that's still the case. And the deputies are, the two deputies that are assigned at a homeless liaisons, they do have that information, they do pass on that information to the folks they contact. And the two officers that I have, they're on opposite shifts. So there will always be one on duty during the day shift hours, so to kind of cover the entire week. They do have contacts with various other agencies, county agencies that do offer services in case they need a referral. They're able to assist them with that referral so they can get assistance.
But they're all familiar with whatever Ojai has to offer.
Yes, they are.
Okay, thank you.
And these are just photos of some of the deputies that are out doing the foot patrols in the city. So. Any questions?
Thank you, chief. Questions from council?
I have a comment.
Okay. Questions, Ryan or Souza? Okay, any public comments on this? We have Jeffrey Starkweather and Bill Miley.
Same people. Hey, I want to thank the chief for keeping us a very safe city. It reminds me back when we were pushing the dark skies ordinance for the valley. And we solicited Chief Freihoff at the time. And people were like against the dark skies, saying there's all kinds of crimes are committed. We got Chief Freihoff and he was asked by one of the county supervisors, well, what's crime like in Ojai? He says, oh, we really don't have any crime. It's pretty safe city. I thought, wow, that was cool. The cell phone thing, I just, I wasn't planning to talk about it, but there's a great book if you want to read, it's called Traffic. And it points out that you don't even have to be looking at the cell phone. When you're listening to a cell phone, because it distracts you mentally, you're at the same distraction as though you have a DWI. Now, I tested it once with my daughter who had called me. I was going downtown a slow street in where I lived and she was calling me on the cell phone. So I thought I'd test this. I put it down and listened on the, you know, speaker. And as I was concentrating on the road, she kept saying, Dad, are you listening to me? Are you listening to me? It's impossible. You know, if you have a young person drives on a car, they only see like that. That's what a cell phone does for you. So the excuse that, oh, I can just talk on it is not good. So that's, I'm really glad you're coming back on it. And I'm a big supporter of foot patrols and getting out and meeting the public.
Thank you.
I just wanted to point something out about the pattern here. I was a criminal defense lawyer myself, both federal and state. And most violent crimes have some alcohol related to them. People are high. And I just noticed the pattern here. You have 77 code violations of alcohol and two of marijuana. You had 14 or 22 alcohol-related citations and only four, if I got it right, were related to either drugs or alcohol. And you had 16 people who had already lost their licenses with the DWIs. And I would say that of the six crimes against persons, probably a good percentage of those were alcohol-related. So as we get talking about expanding our cannabis and so forth, we should keep these statistics in mind because we're not getting crime. And I have, all the crimes I've ever represented people on was a lot. I never remember anybody that did it because they were high on marijuana. High on other stuff, yes, but not on marijuana. So anyway, just a little factoid.
Thank you, Jeffrey.
Thank you, Jeff.
Bill Miley?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I'd like to point out several of the numbers in the arrest report that Chief Rivera just presented relative to what Jeffrey was talking about. Alcohol use and then cannabis use, principally because of the ongoing agenda items, the agenda item that the planning commission is dealing with on the council referral for consideration of a C1 zoning on the east end of Ojai Avenue for cannabis dispensaries and also for the issue, which would be new, cannabis consumption lounges. And I guess I won't repeat this, but, oh, so prior to the meeting, I chatted with Chief Rivera and the need for the planning commission to request him to come and talk about the stats that the sheriff's department is recording. And as Jeffrey said, alcohol seems to be much bigger in the issue of arrests than cannabis. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments on Zoom? If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on this item, please use the raised hand function now. Great, let's move on to discussion. Bill?
Three quick comments. First of all, it's a 30-year trend of reduced crime in our community. And I think that's a testimony to an effective, in my opinion, that doesn't happen without an effective partnership between law enforcement and the citizens of the community.
Definitely.
And I just think we ought to be, you know, give ourselves some credit that, boy, I mean, it's pretty dramatic in terms of that 30-year trend. I mean, it goes up and down in particular years, but it's a real statement to the professionalism of the, and the, more than just, more the professionalism, the overall sensibility in terms of community engagement. So I just really, you know, want to call out that compliment for you guys.
It's definitely just not the deputies out there working the boots on the ground. It's everybody, the community that calls us. There are our eyes and ears out there when we're not there. So a big thanks to the community for keeping our crime rates down.
Yeah, it's wonderful. And I think the walks are a natural partnership with community engagement, goes hand in hand. It's part of this whole trend, I think, effective trend. And it's good for physical fitness, too. And then the other thing I want to point out is that one of the, in my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, one of the really important distinctions between an injury accident and a, or injury collision, excuse me, and a non-injury collision is the speed at impact. And that's where our efforts at traffic calming, both with the ATP project and other come in. The more we can have traffic calming, the more we're going to, when we have collisions, there'll be non-injury and not injury.
Oh, definitely. I mean, if you can reduce speed, you probably can reduce some accidents and probably reduce the number of injury accidents that happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll make a comment.
Okay, go ahead, Souza.
So Chief Rivera, thank you so much for all the good work that you've demonstrated here. And I just want to say that our parks, our schools, the design of our neighborhood, everything about our town helps to prevent crime. And in my opinion, especially our parks, because they open up a healthy environment for the lower-income members of the community that are in apartments and they don't, those kids don't have a yard to play in. And it's just absolutely wonderful that whole families can go to the park for healthy recreation and all of those, everything that's, you know, good for the human being, for our healthy families, helps to prevent crime in addition to all the good work that our law enforcement is doing. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan? Randy?
Yeah, thank you, chief. Obviously, this clearly shows the diversity, or not the diversity, but, you know, when you look at all the activities that you list here, people, I think, just assume that police officers drive around in cars and look for car accidents or car-related problems. The reality is, there's a lot more to policing than meets the eye. So thank you for that. You know, I don't know how to bring this up without vilifying myself, but I just like to say it as often as I can. As we increase the use of bicycles in this community, and I am for that, we need to recognize that we all share the road. And what I found interesting is I didn't see one ticket or one offense for anyone riding a bike. And as I drive around this community, I see a ton of them. Now, I know that it's that rule of, well, where's that police officer when I need it? And I'm not saying that the person riding the bike is a bad person, but I'm just saying we need to recognize that as we initiate more of the complete street principles, as we enhance and engage in more foot traffic and more bicycling and those types of activities in our communities, that there's a joint relationship between us driving the car, them riding the bike, and those walking, as well as how the police engage with all three of us. So I want to thank you for how you're doing it now. And I'm hoping that down the road, we engage with people riding bikes, maybe have a meet and greet at one of the, at the, what's our bicycle center there on? The Mob Shop. That would be a great place to have one of you and the city manager meet and just talk in general about what we see and what we observe and where we're going. But I don't see this going backwards. In fact, I'm a firm believer that life cycles and that we were riding bikes before we were driving cars and that we are cycling back to driving, to riding bikes with a reduction of vehicles. So I just believe in that. So this community is evolving, it's changing, and I just hope that we recognize that we're all doing it together and that we respect that. all doing it together and that we respect that. So, aside from that, I just think that what you're doing and what your staff is doing is outstanding. So, thank you.
Thank you.
And I have to admit, I was pulled over several years ago for riding my bike too fast across Ojai Avenue. And it was so, I was so grateful, and the officer explained to me that 87% of drunk drivers are not caught, and they would never see me.
We're back. And we're gonna move, and it's, there's been a suggestion, oh, wait.
So, slow down. Very kind. And I would just like to say thank you, Chief, because I've watched you, I've had the opportunity
There's been a suggestion to move item number six up to four, because we have Darcy here
to watch you de-escalate a couple of situations on Ojai Avenue. And your peaceful demeanor and your compassion and just your way of being is so beautiful
from Habitat for Humanity.
I concur.
Okay, all right.
to watch, because it, you know, just everybody gets calmer and quieter.
Let's move on then to item number six, which is now item number four.
So, you really are an officer of peace, and we are so lucky to have you here.
Letter of Engagement with Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County Regarding 408 North Montgomery
So, thank you.
Well, I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much.
Street Affordable Housing.
Anything else? Well, thank you. And let's take a five-minute break and come back.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna give just a brief background on this project, and then I'm gonna ask Darcy
Thank you.
to speak and give some background on Habitat for Humanity. This project, you may recall, the Zoom is not cooperating today. This project stems from, we've talked previously about this project. And the most recent conversation was back in April of 2019. So, it may have kind of fallen off some people's radar. But recently, when we had our city council goal-setting session, this was identified as a priority project. We talked about some of the challenges with it related to funding and some of the challenges we've run into. And the council had said to try to get creative and explore some partnerships and see if we could find something that would work for this site. And so, that's what we've done and what we're presenting tonight. Just as a little bit of background, as a reminder, the site we are talking about is 408 North Montgomery. The photo here shows the parcel, which is at the corner of Montgomery and Franklin. I believe it was previously two duplexes that had at some point been condemned and were removed. And so, now, it's basically a dirt lot. And so, three years ago, April of 2019, so almost three years ago to the date, the city had commissioned from the designer Nick Oatway, a design for what could potentially be done at that site. And this high-level shows it, and the elevations also show some of the detail. But it's essentially what was proposed was five to seven units, but with more of a focus on the five-unit design. But it was like five-units community at this site. And so, we had done the work to design that concept. But at that point, the gap between the funding that we had available in our housing fund and the gap, and the cost to do the project was very substantial. The city had no mechanism to fund it. So, we were exploring partnerships with different lenders and banks and things, and it kind of just stalled out. And so, as I mentioned, this year at the council goal-setting session, we talked about exploring this more creatively and finding a partner. We reached out to Habitat for Humanity and Darcy. And so, with that, I will introduce Darcy to give us a little bit of background on Habitat. And I'll run the slideshow. You can tell me next.
Mayor Kellmers, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Darcy Taylor. I'm CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County. Our organization is responsible for all of the county of Ventura. We are not a builder of rental units. We build primarily four-cell units in the county. Our targeted audience are affordable housing and low income. ADAMI in that kind of category, average median income is our specialty. We're not a mini mansions, you know, we're not a Cabrillo. We sell properties and homes. And the reason we do that is, slide number two, is that we believe homeownership provides a number of different opportunities for the people who purchase our homes. We think upper mobility and the American dream is wrapped around financial security that's based on a family's ability to move through a process where they can build wealth, personal wealth, we think is important. That's why we, we know that rental units are important. They're a part of the governor's mandate for increasing the number of affordable housing. But for us, we feel that, you know, our vision is that every individual deserves a place to live that's safe. We also believe they deserve to live in a place that's safe, that they own, which is a little different than having a rental property. And anybody knows anything about rentals in Ventura County knows that most of the low-income and affordable rental units have a number of other things that are part of those rental units. Subsidies and supportive rental agreements that tie, we think, rental, people that rent homes into long-term commitments that don't allow for them to build personal wealth. Next slide. So, our goal at Habitat is to look at all of the individuals that are in that ADAMI group, no matter where they've come from. They could be farm workers, they could be service workers, they could be, in Ventura County, for example, my daughter just graduated from college with a college degree, cannot afford to buy a house. I just saw the latest report is the, the average cost of a home in Ventura County now is up over $650,000.
All right, we ready? Come on back, please. Okay, we're coming back. We're back. And we're gonna move, and it's, there's been a suggestion, oh, wait. There's been a suggestion to move item number six up to four, because we have Darcy here from Habitat from Humanities.
I concur.
Okay, all right. Let's move on then to item number six, which is now item number four. Letter of Engagement with Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County Regarding 408 North Montgomery Street Affordable Housing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna give just a brief background on this project, and then I'm gonna ask Darcy to speak and give some background on Habitat for Humanity. This project, you may recall, the Zoom is not cooperating today. This project stems from, we've talked previously about this project. And the most recent conversation was back in April of 2019. So, it may have kind of fallen off some people's radar. But recently, when we had our city council goal-setting session, this was identified as a priority project. We talked about some of the challenges with it related to funding and some of the challenges And some of the challenges we've run into. we've run into. And the council had said to try to get creative and explore some partnerships and see if And the council had said to try to get creative and explore some partnerships and see if we could find something that would work for this site. And so, that's what we've done and what we're presenting tonight. Just as a little bit of background, as a reminder, the site we are talking about is 408 North Montgomery. The photo here shows the parcel, which is at the corner of Montgomery and Franklin. I believe it was previously two duplexes that had at some point been condemned and were removed. And so, now, it's basically a dirt lot. And so, three years ago, April of 2019, so almost three years ago to the date, the city had commissioned from the designer Nick Oatway, a design for what could potentially be done at that site. And this high-level shows it, and the elevations also show some of the detail. But it's essentially what was proposed was five to seven units, but with more of a focus on the five-unit design. But it was like five-units community at this site. And so, we had done the work to design that concept. But at that point, the gap between the funding that we had available in our housing fund and the gap, and the cost to do the project was very substantial. The city had no mechanism to fund it. So, we were exploring partnerships with different lenders and banks and things, and it kind of just stalled out. And so, as I mentioned, this year at the council goal-setting session, we talked about exploring this more creatively and finding a partner. We reached out to Habitat for Humanity and Darcy. And so, with that, I will introduce Darcy to give us a little bit of background on Habitat. And I'll run the slideshow. You can tell me next.
Mayor Kellmers, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Darcy Taylor. I'm CEO of Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County. Our organization is responsible for all of the county of Ventura. We are not a builder of rental units. We build primarily four-cell units in the county. Our targeted audience are affordable housing and low income. ADAMI in that kind of category, average median income is our specialty. We're not a mini mansions, you know, we're not a Cabrillo. We sell properties and homes. And the reason we do that is, slide number two, is that we believe homeownership provides a number of different opportunities for the people who purchase our homes. We think upper mobility and the American dream is wrapped around financial security that's based on a family's ability to move through a process where they can build wealth, personal wealth, we think is important. That's why we, we know that rental units are important. They're a part of the governor's mandate for increasing the number of affordable housing. But for us, we feel that, you know, our vision is that every individual deserves a place to live that's safe. We also believe they deserve to live in a place that's safe, that they own, which is a little different than having a rental property. And anybody who knows anything about rentals in Ventura County knows that most of the low-income and affordable rental units have a number of other things that are part of those rental units. Subsidies and supportive rental agreements that tie, we think, rental, people that rent homes into long-term commitments that don't allow for them to build personal wealth. Next slide. So, our goal at Habitat is to look at all of the individuals that are in that ADAMI group, no matter where they've come from. They could be farm workers, they could be service workers, they could be, in Ventura County, for example, my daughter just graduated from college with a college degree, cannot afford to buy a house. I just saw the latest report is the, the average cost of a home in Ventura County now is up over $650,000. You know, that kind of tells it all. So, in that category that we look at, we look at individuals that are, they could be homeless, they could be farm workers, they could be, you know, as we know, multiple families in a single dwelling, which is very common in Ventura County, where you'll find four families living in one single-family unit. They could be living in a garage. There's a number of people that fit that ADAMI category that we target with our building programs and affordable housing, building opportunities. And we believe we need to take them through that, even some people that are currently renting today, to drive them towards the process of homeownership. We focus on the ADAMI. We are what is considered the state of California, an affordable housing developer. And I want to stress this point here is, and I talked this with James a number of times, that we do not give away homes. Every person that buys a Habitat home or is part of our program gets a qualified mortgage. Their mortgage is just different than the one that you and I would get from a local bank. But they're, we're not about, you know, handouts, we're about hand-up. And that's really what our focus is within our organization. Next slide. So, Habitat's designed our whole program around four central programs. One, new construction. We do a lot of home repair, which we've done some here in Ojai, which is part of, you know, the belief that our veterans and a number of elderly people cannot afford to do home repairs in houses that are old or trailer homes that are falling apart. That's another part of what we do in our, in our, in our programs. We do playoff fields, which is a program designed around helping the military, and then our restorers. One of the things I'm very proud of is we have two restorers in the county, one on Eastman and Oxnard, and the other on Simi, in Simi on L.A. Avenue. We raise about $1.4 million in those two stores. It's our for-profit arm of our business. That pays for all of our expenses that relate to our admin costs. So, every dollar we raise goes towards building and into the new construction program and the home repair program that we have. Very proud of that, of that fact. Which, when you look at the balance sheet of Habitat, helps us to get money from the federal government, from local banks and other lending institutions as it relates to our programs. Next slide. So, we're very busy. That's why when I had these conversations with James, we wanted to figure out a way to get Ojai into the queue, if I could say that. We just completed six units in Colonia. We did a two-unit build on Berry Street and Camarillo. We're actually, right now, working on a, there's a 61-unit build in Camarillo in partnership with Mini Mansions and the Area Housing Authority that's right down the street from our two units. We're gonna build eight four-cell units and a 61-unit build that consists of rental units and four-cell. I've got a five-home development on West Sea. We call it our Beachfront Property. We're completing that build May 13th. It's got ocean view, they're townhomes, two-story, beautiful, beautiful property there. I'm doing a 28-tiny home build in Oxnard that's related to a progress or a program that we're tied with the county. And the Oxnard Housing Authority that's really designed around transitional housing for homeless. And we're real excited about that project. And then last night, I just gave a presentation to the city of Simi, and they're turning me loose on a 10-home build project on Simi Avenue and Nita Street. So, we're, we've got a lot of stuff going on, but we're hoping that, I've never built in the city of Ojai. I would sure love the opportunity to do that. Next slide. So, as I said, you know, we're really about affordable mortgages. It's a hand-up, not a hand-out. Every single person that buys a home from us has to put in sweat equity into the build themselves, 500 hours. We're real excited about that. We also, the reason why I no longer build one home is I also believe that sweat equity, designed around a community project where there's multiple families participating together, builds a certain sense of commitment to each other and the property that they're fixing to own. We know that there are a number of things that happen with regards to the Habitat builds. Property value goes up. All of our homeowners sign a 40-year agreement with us to maintain their properties in the same manner in which they receive them when they're built. So, the idea that Habitat homeowners don't maintain their property is a myth, as is the myth that Jimmy Carter founded Habitat for Humanity. Most of you know that's not true.
It's a good myth, though.
Yeah, it is a good one. Next slide. So, why is it important that you think about Habitat as a partner with your particular project? One is that in Ventura County, Ojai included, one in four families spend more than 50% of their income on housing, which is a clear indicator that people that are in the service industry in particular, or that are in that ADAMI category, can't afford to live a life that's enjoyable if 50% of their income is being spent on housing. I don't think there's anybody in this room, including anybody sitting here today, that is spending that much on rent or on a mortgage. Another thing that's important to understand about why it's important for Habitat to come into the community is there are stats that indicate these very important facts. Anyone that is in a Habitat home, graduation rates increase in the children that are part of that, that home or in that situation. Children's health gets better. Net family wealth increases, which I've already said. Property values around the Habitat homes go up. And obviously, they're in a community, they pay taxes, they go to school, they shop. So, there's an increase. So, there's an increase in the overall boost in the economy. The last thing I would say is this, related to this particular topic, is that there's also anecdotal information that says that people that are in Habitat homes or in homes that are affordable, they just live a better life. You know, we always tell the story about, you know, Habitat homeowners get their first credit card or get to buy their first car. You know, the things that we take for granted, you know, Habitat homeowners, it's the first time they get an opportunity to do that, or they send their first child to college. Those are things that happen as a result of what Habitat can do to a particular community if we're allowed to build or become a part of that. And then lastly, on this particular topic is that anybody that's involved in Habitat, they sign a 40-year agreement with us. So, what that means is they have a relationship not only with the lender, could be Union Bank, there are four principal banks we use here in the county, but they also have a relationship with us that goes for 40 years. And they're not allowed to resell that home or that property in that 40 years unless they sell it affordable for the price that they got plus whatever the AMI might be at the time of that sell. So, we're in relationship with them regularly. We manage that process. We check on the house. The covenant has rules like you can't turn your garage into a room. You've got to cut your yard. Yeah, you have to paint, you know, you have to maintain your property because we know that if you don't do that, then Habitat's going to get blamed for having an impact on the neighborhood or the community in which we built those homes. So, that's another aspect of having Habitat come into building the community and why it's important that, I think, we maintain these kind of relationships with the families that are associated with our purchase process. Next slide. So, this is a pretty simple thing here. In our second program, we also do home repair, which is, I mentioned this on the slide because it's also tied to our homeowners. So, if a homeowner calls us, no matter how long they may have been in that home, like for example, we have, we built, what, 22 homes in Piru, 22 years ago on the cul-de-sac there. If someone calls me and says, hey, you know, I have a problem with my roof, Habitat's more than willing to help them find a solution to that roof problem. And not that we have to do that, but that's the type of relationship we have with them long-term. But that falls under our home repair program, which we've done over 180 homes since 2011, which is really a great program because it focuses on veterans, disability, disability homeowners, and it's supported by federal and state funds, which is a big part of this particular program's funding. Next slide. The most important thing about Habitat is the fact that 6% of our homes are built with volunteers. And I know that my conversations with James were, and others, that a particular project here in Ojai, they want the community involved in helping us to build the particular project. We are the only builder in the county that's designed to operate that way. We are the only builder, let me say that again, in the county designed to manage a build program with a volunteer workforce. Now, I do have 40 employees, well, actually 47, but our construction program is designed around only three full-time employees. The rest of the work is done by the community and volunteers in the area. So, it's important to understand that that's how we operate, is through volunteerism and the networks that we've been able to do over the years. And also, what allows for us to sell our homes cheaper is our subcontractors are also involved in a process of donating time, energy, labor as part of that build structure as well. And you get all of that when Habitat comes to your city to build affordable housing. Next slide. As I mentioned, our playoffs program is designed specifically for the military. We do a program that's associated with Port Weneme and Point Magoo. We believe very strongly in supporting our military. And for many of you who don't know this, they are also underfunded and underpaid and unable to buy homes in our county, which is a travesty, just like teachers are underpaid and we're unable to buy homes in our county. The military is very much in that same boat. So, this program is specifically designed to help out military families and just give them an opportunity, and the corporate world, an opportunity to invest in our tremendous soldiers and veterans. Next slide. This is my last slide here. I mentioned this, we've got two restores. Everything in our restores, aside from, we buy rugs, we buy appliances, but everything other than that is donated. And that's why we're able to make such a, you know, a tremendous amount of revenues because everything in our stores comes to us as a donation. And really, that's Habitat. And a, you know, an elevator speech, that's what you get if you allow for us to come and be a part of this particular program. Now, in relationship to what James has asked us to do or come to share with you today is, we'd like to do the following. We'd like to present to the council three types of designs, which we're real proud to say that it won't cost you anything, and James is very clear on that, and give you an opportunity to really see what we can do on that particular lot as it relates to ADAMI density and providing permanent housing for residents here in the city of Ojai. So, that's what we're hoping that you will allow for us to do as an engagement with Habitat for this first phase of the relationship that we hope will extend over many years. I will say this, the reason why I'm here today is I'm hoping, I'm hoping that after we build this first project, that you'll be so overwhelmed and so excited and energized that we'll get multiple opportunities to build additional projects here in the city as well. We know that it's important for us to do the first one right so that we can have other opportunities as well. So, that's Habitat, and I guess I need to answer some questions.
Yeah. Thank you so much, Darcy. Much appreciated. Thank you for showing up. And questions from council?
Yeah, can we remove? Okay, good.
Susie, have you a question?
Yeah, well, first, I just wanted you to remove that slide because I couldn't see anybody. So, my question is, is Nick always design off the table or is that still a consideration?
It is still a consideration.
Okay, thank you. And then, I guess the basic question is that when you come back with your designs, we can still do them according to our standards for sustainability and, you know, water-saving, you know, all of the things that we're concerned about.
Well, yeah, the state of California requires, I mean, we build now, and just so you know, what are called, in our industry, smart homes. So, every house we build now, the governor requires us to have solar. Every house we build now has tankless water heaters. Every house we build now has censored faucets. You know, so, you know, there are state guidelines that we're required to follow, as well as, you know, here in Ojai and in the county of Ventura, our landscaping has evolved over the years where now we don't put grass in. Most of our houses are designed with a desert type of a design where there's less water use and the care of the property. So, that's all part of how the building codes have evolved. And to be perfectly honest with you, we follow the building codes to the law. Obviously, we couldn't be, you know, a Class A contractor if that wasn't the case.
Thank you.
Darcy, are you building all-electric now, and can that be a requirement?
It can be. You know, our tiny homes, each of the units has an electrical charger that will allow for, you know, if you have an electric car, you can charge your car there as well. So, that is something that is being looked at. Obviously, you know, the governor is requiring some major changes with regards to the building code related to electricity and those kind of things moving forward. And that's primarily based on the fact that, not so much in Ventura County, but further south you go, rolling blackouts are a major issue and problem associated with the use of electricity in summer months and, you know, in spring as well. So, yeah, that is something that we can look at. Again, when we looked at what James gave us, there are a couple of factors that we have to take into consideration. One is, in any build here in the county, there are parking requirements that are really, you know, drive how that property can be built on and kind of maintain some size issues associated with that. Water is number two. Obviously, it's a big, it's a big deal. And then also too, there are some restrictions as to how high you can build a unit, depending on some of the ordinances in different cities across the county. So, that's another thing, you know, you have to keep in mind when you're building in Ventura County. So, those are all things that are part of the process. But the state is now requiring Habitat and other builders to build smart homes. So, within that building requirement are electrical issues, like I said, water issues as well. And then the last thing I would say is this, the size of the units can sometimes be determined by the infrastructure on the property. You know, what is, where do you got to pull the gas from? Those kind of things are all part of that process. And then lastly, I'd say this, I learned a big lesson three years ago when I built a five-unit condo structure in Oxnard. And this is something that, you know, when we look at designs, it's important for you to hear this. The State of California Real Estate Association requires that anytime you go to five or more units that are connected, you're required to have an HOA. The challenge that exists for us, for Habitat builders, is this. They have a low-interest mortgage, so they, our typical mortgages run about 700 to 1100, right? And most of our families are in that 40 or 50 AMI, so they have a combined income maybe of $60,000 a year. The state of California has a calculation form that determines what an HOA pays based on the calculation, right? So, they have a mortgage that's probably 900, we'll just say for discussion, 900, and the HOA fee is 360, right? Based on the calculation. And so, when we're looking at how we build things here in Ventura County, that's another thing we take in consideration. I will never build a condo unit or a townhome unit that has five or more units that are connected. I'll maybe do, build two, 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 to get around the rule. We, our law firm, Re-Law, out of Los Angeles sued the state to get the fee reduced. We got it reduced, but not really enough to have an impact on a low-income family. Think about it, $360, that's, that's a substantial amount of money. So, all these things are, you know, Mayor, a part of how we look at designing a project for a specific piece of property. And this property that James has brought to us is, I mean, it's not a huge piece. It's not, it's not a very large piece of property. So, we're really going to have to look at putting some creative designs together to get as many people on that property in a way that's not overcrowding and, you know, causing problems based on the proximity of the buildings.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you for all the information. It's, you know, I'm surprised that you're not doing more in all of our communities within the county. It's, what you're doing is just incredible. I was fortunate, we got to work on a project out in Thousand Oaks many years ago. The California Landscape Contractors Association of the Ventura County donated all of the landscaping product, and we all pitched in and provided the service. As far as assessing a project, we came to you on this site. What if we had five other sites in the community that we would like some form of an assessment? Do you provide that service?
Yeah, so typically how it goes is, I believe in working with cities with good faith, right? If I have to invest $50,000 in an architectural design, I've got to, you know, do the infrastructure process, that probably costs me another four or five grand, then I'm doing that with the understanding that the city that I'm working with, in good faith, is going to give me an opportunity to build, right? Doesn't cost you anything upfront, though. And I made that clear when James was very strict with me to say, make sure you say that it doesn't cost the city anything for us to put together what we think is a proposal with multiple opportunities to build on the site, and it doesn't cost the city anything.
Well, I'd even go further in that. Rather than even reaching the proposal stage, would be to actually do a site visit and have a discussion as to what you believe, is it buildable, is it doable, versus you investing any of your time and money into it. Because we have some sites here in town that we could do that on. And I'm just, I don't want to limit it. You know, we had a discussion Sunday by the House of Representatives, what was it?
Carbajal.
Salud Carbajal.
And one of the things that he talked about was affordable housing in Santa Barbara and how they achieved it. And they achieved it by doing micro, you know, micro affordability throughout the city. Because when I heard Santa Barbara, I said, well, we're not Santa Barbara, we're a poster, we're a post stamp compared to Santa Barbara. But we do have properties here, we do have land here, and we are lacking affordable housing for a lot of our service workers in this community. So, I'd be interested to, after this, to actually get with James and maybe even put together a small committee.
We're still on questions. Any other questions from, yep, do you want to answer?
Let me just clarify your question this way. I would say, the word affordable housing means a lot of things to different people.
Absolutely.
You know, for example, Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara's building right now affordable housing that are rental units. I mean, that's, I mean, you know, I know, I know the CEO of Habitat in Ventura and Santa Barbara as well. We just got, I just want to make sure, when we say affordable, that means a lot of things. It means, it also means that affordable doesn't, does not necessarily mean low income. Just like with the ADAMI low-income band, there's a band for affordable. So, you have, you have the bottom band of affordable, and then you have the higher band of affordable. So, someone could be making $120,000 combined income and be, say, at the lower band of affordable. Say, a police officer, fireman, if you're lucky to be a teacher at the, well, a teacher wouldn't be at the higher, they'd be at the lower end. My wife's a teacher, by the way. Yeah, so, they'd be at the low, low, low end. But then you could get affordable at the higher end, could be, say, 140 combined income. And therein lies some of the challenges that exist with building on land given by certain, you know, because they're, they are addressing their arena numbers per the governor and the pressure from the state by building affordable housing, but it's rental primarily, most time it's rental.
Well, we get to the discussion side of this, I'll have more things to say to you specifically regarding affordability because I am in complete alignment with your thought process.
Any other questions? Okay, let's move on to public comment. We have, surprise, surprise, I'm going to switch it up, Bill Miley and Jeffrey Starkweather.
Collaborating over there, Mayor.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. I write Jeffrey's and he writes mine. So, as you know, I have been involved in this effort for several years, 408 North Montgomery. At one point, we hoped the city would build it with bank funding and provide moderate-income affordable housing for folks working in Ojai. income affordable housing for folks working in Ojai with, who have financial housing challenges. The costs were greater than the proposed rental income, that option ended. And as the city manager said, the pandemic stopped any effort to continue. Lately, the option of seeking input from Habitat for Humanity of Ventura County was pursued and that option is working. In a recent meeting with Darcy Taylor, CEO, CEO of Habitat, it looks like affordable housing could be successfully developed there. The principal housing Habitat creates is owner-occupied, helping the contractor build the structures for workforce folks in Ojai. Previously, the city contracted with local architect Nicholas Otway to develop site plans, and these will be considered as part of the three options that Darcy will present. I would like to say that I have read where, in good sources, that water used by older residential properties is on the average 80% landscape, and there won't be much landscape here. Also, I too envision 408 North Montgomery as the first, if successful, maybe several more on city properties throughout. I fully support the next step of crafting an engagement, a letter of engagement with Habitat for Humanity for next step design options. And most of us know about Habitat, and that trust is strong. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Jeffrey Starkweather.
Appreciate Habitat coming here and making this presentation. I was the chair of a housing task force in North Carolina in a county. And we had what's called inclusionary zoning. So when we had new subdivisions, they had to have 15% affordable. But to spread it out among different income groups, the ones that we had in the development itself, that was like seven and a half percent, they were what we call workforce housing, the 80% to 100% of medium family income. And Habitat was given half of that money to do the 80% and lower, because it's a different population base. Our experience with Habitat in this community was the communities that they developed involved the whole community. There was lots of volunteers, just like the old barn-raising days. People in the community would come and help and want to be part of this process. Secondly, as you know, I'm involved in politics, and I had, I had, I've canvassed that whole community numerous times. And the difference between the apartment buildings that were built for inexpensive and the Habitat places, I mean, you had to be careful when you knocked on doors of some of those apartment places, but not in Habitat. It was like a community. So I'm a big supporter of Habitat. Secondly, I think that, I don't know if it's possible, but I don't think we need parking spaces in that property for this place. That would give them more room to, to spread out, like they say, and avoid a homeowners' association. I mean, they're practically downtown, and I just think in general, we should be careful about requiring parking. It really adds to traffic more than the other way, particularly in, within the downtown three-block area. I think we need to start lobbying our legislators to get rid of this requirement for HOA for affordable housing. That's just outrageous. Senator Bennett, I mean, Assemblyman Bennett's going to be here on the 22nd at the Democratic Club, so this is going to be a chance for us to get on his case and say, we need to eliminate that requirement. And finally, kind of addressing the question about the lots we have, I think it's important to think about different levels of affordability. And we need rentals, and we also use land trusts. This is another way to keep the price down, and you can do that both for rental and homeownership. So I think we need to keep flexible about looking at various options and other resources from the county and other round that we could build different types of affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Any comments on Zoom, Gail?
If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand function now.
Okay, let's move on to discussion.
We have one, okay. We have one speaker, it says Nicholas, I assume that's Mr. Otway? Oh, now he's disappeared. Let me, there, it's come back. He keeps putting his hand down. Let me, let me fix it, one moment. Mr. Otway, if you're there, you can go ahead and speak. If you're muted, please unmute yourself. Are you there? He, he, Mr. Otway or Nicholas, you have your microphone muted? If you can unmute your microphone, you can go ahead and speak. Maybe we can come back to him?
Okay. Okay, let's move on to discussion for now. Bill?
I think it's clear, this is almost a historic opportunity. I'm very excited about the alignment, about how we do things in Ojai and what I'm hearing here from Darcy about how Habitat does things. One of the things I really like is the willingness to work with the community to get the capital cost down. This has been a major impediment, almost a scandal, in parts of LA County in terms of what's going on, in terms of the, the cost per unit. And I think we, we have a real opportunity here to, I think, have an extremely productive relationship, and I, I can't wait to vote for this.
Yeah, yeah. So, okay.
Go ahead, Mayor.
Suzha?
Oh, yeah. So it's my understanding that this is just the beginning of a process, that at the, at the next, the next round, am I understanding correctly, that the next round will be the three possible projects? And at that point, we can address things like parking, shared car use, limiting car use, or no cars, and that sort of thing?
Yes.
Randy?
Yeah, listen. Again, Bob, Bob?
Darcy.
Darcy.
Pardon me?
Darcy.
Darcy.
Darsky?
Darsky.
Darcy.
I'm having this moment again where I, where I can't hear.
You need a candy bar?
No, it's just interesting. I, I'm, because I heard Bob and I went, boy, I don't want to look stupid. Sir.
There you go.
I'll call you sir. It's interesting, when I ran for council seven years ago, that was one of the first questions that was posed to everyone running, is do you believe in affordable housing? And my response was exactly what yours was. Well, affordable has, has a different meaning to everyone in this room. So, one, I agree with you on that 100%. The second thing is, I believe if we're going to do affordable housing, that it has to be a hand up, not a hand out. There are lots of other opportunities, Section 8 housing, there, you know, there's a lot of other ways that we can help people live in a community and actually be a permanent person of that, of that community. This offers someone upward mobility, this offers someone to be a part of the community, this offers someone to be engaged in the community, vice versa. If we're going to do a build site like we did, the record, the park build in the middle of Libby was a community build, and that's exactly what you are, this community thrives on that. So I see it just as a win-win for us, for this community, because that's what we are. And again, I'm not going to shy away from the fact that we need more affordable housing. The unattended consequences of the last 30 to 50 years in this valley has been the fact that we haven't built, and we haven't built any form of affordability. And so we need to recognize that, we need to recognize all of the other tangibles. We're going to hear water, we're going to hear reach codes, we're going to hear all-electric. There's a lot of things that we're doing as a small community which are beneficial to our, our self-interest and our sustainability. And you seem, again, like the right partner, and you seem to be willing to want to participate with that. So someone make the motion so I can.
Well, I just want to make, and I agree with you, Randy, the word affordable has been completely co-opted, you know, because $120,000 a year, that's a lot of money. And so now the terms are very low and extremely low-income households, and that's clearly what we need, and we know that just building more and increasing housing stock doesn't trickle down to people in need. So if we're going to help people, we've got to actually go and help people. So thank you so much, Darcy, this has been really wonderful, and thanks for reaching out, and, you know, we clearly need this. And I also feel strongly that we need to commit to going all-electric, to get off gas, non-renewable energy, and our community supports that, and now is the time. We don't need to talk about it anymore, all the data's out there, we just need to do it. And, and also, we know it's quite, it's healthier, especially in smaller units, to be electric versus gas. Suzha, you want to make a comment?
Um, I, you know, when, when our constituents watch this segment, I know already off the top of my head, one or two families that are on the verge of leaving Ojai because they cannot afford to live here, and I would like to do everything possible to keep those kids in our school. So the next question will be, at what point can people apply? Like, when, when is that handled? At what stage?
It's a few steps away. I wish we could get them built and get people in them, you know, as soon as possible. But, but the next step's just going to be bringing the three designs, so there's still quite a bit of work to do before we, we get to that point.
But people can have hope that, that this is, you know, this is the direction that Ojai is headed.
Yeah.
You know, and that may cause them to endure living with three kids in a one-bedroom apartment a few more years if they know there's help on their horizon. That's, I think, what I'm trying to say.
You know, you can tell them, we have other builds in the county. They can apply for other builds if they're, if they're, well, I'm just saying, there are other opportunities.
I would like to ask council if we could entertain a motion to make this all-electric.
I, I think that's inappropriate at this time. I think we need to move forward with a letter of engagement and give them the space to come back with their considered advice. I mean, I think that's the kind of thing that helps defeat these efforts.
Can we go all-electric, Darcy?
Well, we, typically, we wouldn't do that at this point. We just would, we've got to come out, walk the, walk the property, our, our design company is RRM, and look at what the opportunities or possibilities are. I think that's a discussion that you will have as a council.
Yeah, it's a design process.
Yeah, once you get, yeah, once we get to the next phase, that would be a discussion you can have then.
Right. Are you, are more and more people asking for that? Is, you know, I mean, that's clearly the way that we have to go.
Yeah, so to be perfectly honest, which I always am, the answer to that question is no. I think, I think we're at, at a point now where building smart homes is getting to that point. I think the problem with us as a builder is making the transition from where we are to electric is just really a lot to overcome initially. But I do see the last five years, you know, steps that are happening to move us in that direction.
And I certainly know a lot of people in our community who would love to help you do that and could give you all the data and the information that you could possibly need.
Mayor?
I think Randy was up first and then Bill. Yep.
So, Mayor, I appreciate that comment about going all-electric. I told you, I'm off the fence. But, but I do recognize that we don't want to hold something over anyone's head in this moment, let's get this agreement signed. It's something that we'll come back to council when we bring back the reach codes. There's a lot of, there's a lot of energy right now heading in the right direction. So that's where I would be on that. And Darcy, I got it right, didn't I? See, I heard it. I was listening to the mayor, you know, and, and she said, Darcy. And I said, okay. Okay. Again, I'm, what do we need to do to make a motion on this?
Suzha has a comment, Bill has a, okay, go ahead, Suzha.
Sorry, I forgot to take down my, lower my hand there, sorry. Your comment.
I'm going to make a motion to just get the process going. That's what we need to do. We have a lot of design discussions, absolutely. But at this point, we just need to get the process going, and I want to make a motion to authorize city manager to sign the letter of engagement.
A second?
Roll call, please, Gail.
Do we want to try the Zoom commentator one more time?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, the hand has gone down. Okay.
I might recommend proceeding, given that we have plenty of further opportunities for design discussions later. Thank you.
Is it possible to make some kind of amendment to that, to really encourage us going all-electric in some form?
The, any, any council member can certainly propose an amendment to the motion. The amendment would be voted on first, if it passes or fails, and the motion is adjusted accordingly. So, yeah, you could move to amend the motion to add an all-electric requirement. It would need a second and then voting from there.
Okay. I'd like to make that motion.
There'd be an amendment to add an all-electric requirement.
Yep.
And that will require a second.
Second? Okay.
All right. With that, the main motion can move forward.
Okay.
The amendment having not received a second, the amendment dies for lack of a second. Now the main motion can move forward. The main motion is to direct the city manager to authorize, to execute a letter of engagement with Habitat to prepare concept drawings and designs and cost estimates that would then come back to council.
Okay.
When, among other things, the, the electric issue could be revisited.
And we have a second, so roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes, I'm so grateful and really want all-electric. We have to get off the gas.
Councilmember Wybe?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Gail, Mike?
I'm not on mic, I'm sorry. Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And thank you once again, Darcy, for coming and sharing and doing the work that you do. Much appreciated.
Any idea when Darcy will be back?
I'm going to ask council, can we move number five up and do that now, and then we'll do four afterwards?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to item number five, the appointment of public member to Fiscal Policy Budget Committee.
Yes, thank you. In a very brief report, the, when our public member on the Budget Committee, Steve Olson, got appointed as interim city treasurer in January, it created a vacancy for the public member of the committee. The public member serves a four-year term, is currently vacant, so we recruited, or I'm sorry, advertised for applicants, and the two applications are included in the packet. And so with that, it's, the item is here for council to appoint a public member to the Budget Committee.
Thank you, James. Any questions? Suzha?
Yes. James, could you clarify to the council that the option of the council, if they so desire to appoint both the applicants, is, is available this evening? Could you clarify that?
And so, I mean, all commissions and all committees created by the council, it's the council's purview to decide, you know, how many members and what types of members. So, so there's really a variety of options for the council. If council did want to appoint more than one member, that can be done. And if we wanted to appoint the one, it could be done, or not appoint anybody to the position, it can be done. So, so those are all options tonight.
And one further thing I would add is, if the council wanted to expand the number of public members up to two, for example, or more, that'd come back next time, is we'd have to amend the underlying investment policy resolution, which bakes in the creation of this committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll move on to public comment. We have David Byrne and Bill Miley.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I am very pleased to join this group of distinguished speakers here this evening, so thank you. And thank you to all for everything that you do, all the hard work and all the work you do for the city of Ojai. My name is David Byrne, and I have lived in My name is David Byrne, and I have lived in the city of Ojai for about 30 years now, which I guess makes me a relative newcomer. You're looking for a member of your budget committee. The good news is, is both budget committee applicants are long-term Ojai residents and lifetime good guys. Who you choose, though, should be based on experience and qualifications. Here is an abbreviated resume of one of those applicants. This applicant has a master's degree from the University of Southern California in local government with an emphasis on municipal finance. He has served on the KCLU Public Radio Advisory Board. He's a former city manager, a rotarian, and AYSO soccer coach, boy scout leader, member of the Municipal Finance Officers Association of California, a former Ventura County CEO, retired two-term mayor of Ojai. He helped restore financial health to the cities of Artesia, Ojai, and Ventura, and he brought Ventura County back from the verge of bankruptcy and restored its credit rating on Wall Street. I think you know who I'm all talking about. This is an abbreviated list of Johnny Johnston's accomplishments. Basically, you need a budget committee member. If you were looking for an infectious disease doctor, and Jonas Salk was here raising his hand, it would just be wrong not to choose him. If you were looking for a violinist, and Yasha Heifetz was here raising his hand, it just would not be right to not choose him. Well, Johnny Johnston is raising his hand. His resume is raising his hand, volunteering for this position. It would just not be right to choose him. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next, we have Bill Miley.
Good evening, Bill Miley, for the record. So, I just, I just met David. Please consider my strong support for Jeff Rains as candidate C for private citizen position on the committee. Soon after arriving in Ojai in 1968, my wife and I met and became friends with Alan and Jan Rains and their children, our children, their children. I've known Jeff almost his whole life. He gradually helped manage their business and assumed more and more responsibility. The Rains department store is unique in business sustainability and permanency. They certainly will outlast me. As I see Jeff, he knows Ojai and the Valley from the inside out. He comes from the private business sector. Unless I am wrong, the city government through the committee probably relies on the public citizen position for strong representation from not only private business, but being aware and understanding the dynamics and the impact of Ojai's business community. I believe Jeff's qualities fit that position well. And a quick list that I came up with. One, lifelong Ojai citizen. Two, comes from a historical family. Three, family members helped sustain and build Ojai. Four, well-educated. Five, successful business manager. Six, strong private sector experience. Seven, fully invested in Ojai. Eight, manages an iconic historical business. Nine, nice guy. Ten, rides a bike all over, sometimes without a helmet. So I've tried to influence him on that. Eleven, he wanted to be treasurer, and this would keep him involved. Twelve, money management is his base, store history. Thirteen, he loves Ojai. And fourteen, it's likely that his DNA has Ojai genes. In ending, thank you for considering my points of view. I too, as you well know, love Ojai and have and keep providing my energies and my emails and my three-minute speeches to help it stay strong, respond well to downturns and crises, and look to the future, sustaining our small town and unique, and unique Valley qualities. Jeff will do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Any comments on Zoom, Gail?
If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand function now. And we have one person, Leslie Hess. I'll go ahead and ask her to unmute. Leslie, if you're there, you can, there you go.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everybody. I encourage you to accept Johnny Johnston's generous offer to volunteer to serve on the budget committee. We've heard his resume, it's very impressive. He, but besides his experience, he's honest, reliable, thorough, and precise. Please, accept Johnny's offer to serve on the budget committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. That's it, Gail?
It was, let me see, what's the view? I, it looks like that's, I can't, there we go. Yeah, there's no one else.
Okay. We'll move on to discussion. Randy?
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Jeff Rains as the public member to the fiscal policy budget committee.
Mayor, I had my hand raised.
Oh, I'm sorry, Souza. Go ahead.
Okay. I want to say, first of all, that we are extremely fortunate that we have two excellent candidates who bring two completely different skill sets to the table. Okay, our former mayor, Johnny Johnston, has experience in government, but Jeff Rains has exceptional experience in the private sector, representing the business community. Therefore, I strongly urge my colleagues on the council to, to select both candidates so that they can both bring their unique skill sets to the budget committee. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would just like to, oh, go ahead, Bill, sorry.
I was going to say, I was going to second the motion.
I want to make a counter-motion in that case. Is that, Matt?
Well, are we still on discussion? I would like to make a comment. Is that okay?
Well, to answer the question that was there, if I may, through the mayor, substitute motion could be made to appoint, direct staff to come back with the necessary documents to appoint to. That would be an option for Councilmember Francina. Perhaps a comment from the mayor, then whether or not Councilmember Francina makes, wishes to make that substitute motion, then seconds will fall as they fall.
Okay, thank you. I just think clearly we have to take Johnny Johnston on, I mean, he is, Jonas Salk, he's so qualified. You look at that resume, you know, restored financial health to cities of Artesia, Ojai, and Ventura County. What a gift, all of his experience and knowledge. And it just, we need to, we need to have him. So I just feel really strongly about that.
I do want to make my substitute motion.
Okay.
Yeah, my substitute motion, that we select both candidates and that the staff comes back with, what's the wording, Matt?
It would be to return with an amendment to the investment policy resolution to expand the budget committee to two.
Yes, that's my motion.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I just wanted to clarify something. First of all, was there a motion that was accepted that was on the floor?
My answer is yes. The motion on the floor, made by yourself, seconded by Councilmember Wyreck, is to appoint Mr. Rains.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Now, the amended motion is Souza's.
Correct. Substitute motion, which if.
Substitute, thank you.
If it gets a second, would be voted on first, and if adopted, replace the main motion. I haven't yet heard a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, there is a second.
Can we have the roll call on that, Gail, please?
Councilmember Wyreck?
No.
Mayor Sticks?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Haney?
No.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
No.
Okay, and now we have the other motion that we're going to vote on.
Right, the main motion to appoint Mr. Rains.
Roll call, please, Gail.
Mayor Sticks?
No.
Mayor Protem Haney?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
No.
Councilmember Wyreck?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
Yes.
Next.
Kent Hall.
Move on to number four, Kent Hall Public Rental Policy.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm pulling up, we have just three slides and mostly to show some of the improvements we recently did to Kent Hall. So I'll keep it very brief. Let's see. So the item on tonight's agenda for Kent Hall is to ask council to approve a, a policy and a fee for the rental of Kent Hall.
Touche, with affordable again.
Yep, yep, exactly. It's our theme of the day. But it's, the reason why we have to do this, it's interesting, as we were preparing and getting Kent Hall ready, is we realized that we've never rented Kent Hall out. So we don't have a policy, and we don't have a fee. And so, well, we did not rent it. Another organization rented it. And so, so the item on tonight's agenda is to do that so that the city can rent that space out. And so you can see here, our vision for Kent Hall is to use it as a revitalized, affordable, community meeting site. And in, to do that, we are recommending creating a policy for public meetings at the site. This is not yet the policy for private events, which would be talked about separately and would be handled under a separate policy and separate fee. But these, this would be for public meetings and for charitable organizations and community groups. So as a little bit of background for anybody maybe not familiar, the city resumed management of the site on the campus in late 2021. We walked through the sites, day one, and we realized there's a ton of deferred maintenance on both the Little House Building and the Oak Tree House Building. So we've been working pretty diligently since then to, to try to, to get them up to the level we want them to be. So the picture on this image, I know it's not quite as large as I, as I, as it looked on my screen, but that actually is the refreshed, kind of re-painted, cleaned-up Kent Hall. And we have new tables, new chairs, things like that for the site as well. Kent Hall, just anybody who's not familiar, it's the very large meeting room located at the rear of, of the Little House Building. I think it is where we've had some community meetings in the past. Before the city controlled the building, there were meetings like the Democratic Club at that site. And so I'll keep it very brief. Our plan right now, should council approve, is that we will begin renting the space available May 30th, 2022. Our goal was to keep it affordable and a local community meeting space. And so the policy is written to, with that in mind, it is not a full-service site. We are not going to have a staff person, you know, running meetings or setting up audiovisual equipment. We'll have some of those things there, but it's going to be very self-serve to keep the costs low. So we are recommending for the public groups a, a fee of $35 for three hours, which is comparable. We looked at other cities and the library and, and other groups, and it's a comparable fee for these community meetings. And I think we tried to keep it on the lower end of the comparisons. So, once approved, we will make applications available to the public at ojai.ca.gov/kenthall. And so with that, we are recommending approval of the policy and creation of the $35 fee.
Thank you, James. Any questions from council?
Mayor? Mr. Summers? Are we fine here? I see that the group or individual accepts financial liability for any damages that occur during the tenure of the rental. Are we okay in terms of JPIA guidelines with respect to liability of the city for, say, a trip and fall that occurs during the event?
Yes, we have our existing liability for the, for the infrastructure, for the, for the space, the building. That would, anything that would be caused, say, electrical cords running correctly by an organization, they would be indemnifying us for that.
So we will include an indemnification?
Yes.
And that, that'll be part of the agreement. As part of this policy, will be an indemnification.
Yeah, we'll have a short form facility use agreement that will include the groups indemnifying the city.
Thank you.
A question, Randy?
Yeah, do we know what the cost of, of, what the, what the Help of Ojai rented that space for? Jeffrey, would you know?
I don't, but I wonder.
They were charging 75.
An hour? I mean, three hours?
RBs were longer than an hour, so.
Yeah, it was per event.
So the Help of Ojai is charging 75?
That's, that's kind of an outdoor space.
Okay, and, and, and we're looking at 35. So I, I've got a concern, obvious concern with that number. But the other thing, have we thought about splitting up the, the timeframes? You know, let's, let's say we have a evening rate and a day rate. Have you, have you thought about that? And then also, all the amenities that we're going to provide? If we're providing tables, chairs, speakers, mics, anything of that nature? Or is that part of this rental agreement? Or you haven't thought that for?
Very basic. We, our plan is to have chairs and tables at the site that they can, you know, go in and order however they want to order, you know, different setups. But chairs and tables, and then we're going to install one of the TVs that, we're getting a new TV for the council chambers, so we're going to install that TV there. Yeah, we're going to recycle. And so that's the setup. And, you know, it's going to be, other than that, it's self-serve. Or moving things around or bringing in, you know, sodas or whatever, they're going to have to bring their own supplies and equipment. So it's very self-serve.
And you feel comfortable at $35 for, is it three hours? Is that what I'm looking at?
Yeah, and I mean, it is.
That we, that we're, that we're recovering the cost of someone showing the site, signing the documents, and then coming back at the end and visiting and doing any additional cleanup?
It, it's not going to be 100% cost recovery. And that's why we're trying to be very clear that this is for community meeting groups. There's a public benefit that justifies, you know, and it's a council choice. But that's why we're saying it's a public benefit, so that would justify having a discounted rate. But that's why I clarified that private events are not going to be booked this way. If somebody's going to have a private event, it would be 100% cost recovery because there is no benefit to the taxpayer of doing that. So part of why we set the fee was, we looked at the comparable agencies, and we saw that, I believe it was the library has a meeting room for $25. And granted, the meeting room's smaller than ours, but we thought, we don't necessarily want to undercut the library, but we thought that this would be the next step up for a group that couldn't fit in that library.
Is it 25 an hour, or 25 for three hours?
I believe it was 25 for three hours, but I can, I'd, I'd have to confirm that. Yeah, it may be, yeah. It may have been. But it is, $35 for three hours is a reduced rate in recognition of theoretically the public benefit.
Any other questions, Souza, Ryan?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I hear what you're saying about the public benefit, James, but I'm still curious, what would the fee be for full recovery?
So we haven't performed a comprehensive fee study. It would be substantially higher. I think if we were talking full fee recovery, my estimate offhand, based on some other fee study comparables, would probably be something like, probably about $150 for three hours, you know, is ballpark.
Oh, okay. My, my thinking.
Yeah, right.
My thinking is that, you know, let's say it's $15 for, per hour. That would make four, it's really hard to raise the fees once we start like this.
Can we stick to questions? Yep.
Yeah, no, so my question is, well, you, you know, I'm thinking, I, I have concern about that. Okay, so I'll save my further comments for discussion.
Okay.
Yeah, I will note to that point is the more somebody uses it, the lower that cost would be. I think to Councilmember Haney's point, if somebody uses the space once, we have to have a staff person go walk the site with them and explain how everything works. That's expensive. If they use it every two weeks, you know, you only have to do that walkthrough once. So, so it just depends. But, you know, that'd be for the, you know, one, one, one meeting, one rental, one rental, and having to walk them through everything and set everything up, so.
Okay. Finished with questions? Will, any public comment on Zoom, Gail?
If anyone in the Zoom queue would like to comment on this item, please use the raise hand function now.
Let's move on to discussion. Randy?
So, again, I'm not trying to, to be the bad guy here regarding fees, but it's wear and tear.
Can you move the slide?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
It's wear and tear. That's what I look at. And, you know, I think, I don't have, you know, it seems like the help of Ojai was renting this room out at a premium for trying to help community members. I'm a little shocked at that price, but I could see something in between there, or, you know, $25 an hour or something like that. You know, I've been to Democratic Club meetings, you know, we could get them done quicker than three hours. You know.
We talk all the time.
Yeah. That's right. I forgot. Jeffrey's the president now, so we're, so we got to.
He's a tough test.
He may have to pay 25 out of his own wallet.
Should have seen him with salute, right?
But, but that's my, but, but my concern is just the wear and tear.
Make a motion.
And then, no, I'm not done yet. And then, and then the other part of it is, is the fact that we should be a full-service entity to someone coming in and using that room. That's why I would like to see us create some type of, a microphone, and some type of a speaker, and some type of a podium, something of that nature. We maybe don't have to charge for chairs and tables, but there are just amenities that people would like to have that, that they don't have. And that's, that's why I'm thinking. Maybe we need to, to come back and attach that to some type of an agreement.
Susa's your hand up.
Well, my, my thinking is that to, to at least slightly increase the fee, considering what Mayor Protamhaney just brought up, yeah, I'm not, I'm not, you know, I'm not comfortable with that fee. I'm just not comfortable with it. I mean, it just doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right to me, but I'm just, I'm still thinking about it, so.
Bill?
Right now.
Not, not to the exclusion of further policy development along the lines we've been talking about, but I know there's a demand, so let's get out of the gate. And I'm going to make a motion, we approve this policy with $50.
Okay. I'll, I'll second that.
Did you say $50?
50.
Yeah. That seems better, yeah.
Roll call, please, Gail?
Is there a second?
Need a second.
I seconded.
I'm sorry, Ryan, go ahead.
Sorry, I just want to say, like, just so everybody knows, we're talking about $15 over something that maybe gets used a few times. It's not going to recover anything. It's just, I don't know, we're just making a point to make it more expensive. If we're trying to cost recover, we're not going to do it. If we're trying to make a point, we're not going to do it. It's not going to change anything. I just, you know, if staff says $35 is solid enough, I, I don't really know what the point of raising it to 15 is, other than to feel better, but I, I, I don't really understand why we, if, if staff thinks 35 is good, I, I trust them, but.
Okay, my, my, may I?
Well, we do have a motion and a second, so we should vote on that, correct?
If council can discuss further, it's desire.
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Susa.
Yeah, my thinking had been was, you know, at least $15 an hour, at least. So, that's why I'm more comfortable with 50. Just seems more solid, and, and I think it does make a point. I think it's just reasonable. I think we're undercutting, I, I can't imagine that the library is 25 for three hours. Maybe it is, but I'm not so sure.
Okay. Ready for a roll call? Gail, please.
Mayor Protamhaney?
Yes. Gail, Mike.
Oh, sorry. For the microphone, that was Mayor Protamhaney, and he said yes. Mayor Stix?
Yes.
Councilmember Wirick?
Yes.
Councilmember Francina?
Yes.
Councilmember Blatz?
I'm all for using it, but I don't understand the increase, so no.
I'm sorry, was that a no?
That's a no.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to council member reports.
I would just like to let the public know that I think that the City of Ojai did this whole valley and this whole watershed a lot of good, engaging in a discussion with the Department of Water Resources. And just to cut to the chase, the importance of that discussion was in support of the watershed as managed as a whole, with as much local control as possible, and committed to the principles of SIGMA, the Sustainable Groundwater Management Act. And I'm just going to leave it at that, because I think that the movement towards mediation and perhaps a successful mediation consistent with the principles of SIGMA is important and a, more of a possibility than it's been in a while. And that's a very good thing for this entire valley.
Thank you, Bill. Any other council member reports? Randy?
Maybe Bill should have started out with stating that the ad hoc committee, including the city manager, met with the State Water Resource Board, and as a result, that's what Bill was talking about. You kind of, my wife would tell you, you, you brought me in the middle of the conversation and you got to figure out what you were talking about.
I got my low blood sugar problem, probably, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to city manager's report.
The only item on the city manager's report is that tomorrow, we have a disaster council meeting at 10:00 AM that will be recorded and televised and available on Zoom. It, it's particularly interesting for people who are interested in watching, because we're going to be kind of touring the emergency operations center. So, that information on that is available on our website, on our homepage.
Be exciting.
Yeah, it'll be a good one. And then, just quickly, for the next council meeting, because we know there are a lot of community groups interested, just for the council to be aware, we, we received about 15 applications for community funding this year, up from three last year, and I think three or four the year before. So, I think it speaks to all the groups getting kind of going again after COVID, and how we've talked about, we're seeing more events, applications come in than ever before, and I think this was another indication of that. But we're going to have the budget workshop focused on the CIP at the next meeting, the community funding applicants at the next meeting, and the hotel, the Roar Hotel Appeal will also be at the next meeting. So, those are the three items earmarked right now.
James, do you, James, may I, do you want to mention the Arbor Day event on Friday?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you for reminding me. Yes, so Friday, we are having an Arbor Day tree planting ceremony at Libby Park at, I believe it's 10:30. And so, we'll, we'll plant a sycamore tree and have some shovels and, and have, I think, I think the plan right now, if I remember, well, maybe I shouldn't say if I don't remember right. I'll leave it to, join us 10:30 at Libby Park.
Mayor, one other comment from the city manager. James, I, I read that we're having an open house at the rec center, and I would like to invite chief to participate and bring some officers down and, and again, do a community walkthrough.
Yeah.
Already in the works.
Yeah, I believe we got a table front and center for the, for the chief, so we're on the same page. It's in May, and I, I was going to announce it, but I didn't remember the date offhand. Maybe the chief does.
I believe it's the 29th.
May 29th. And so, that'll be the rec open house, which always coincides with the soccer trophy, so it's always a huge event, so come out to that event as well.
And meanwhile, on Friday, at the same time, the new fire station in Upper Ojai is going to be unveiled, so I'll be up there. Yep. Okay, any future agenda items? Bill?
I would like to ask for council support that we put on a, a future agenda, a discussion of the, the issue of districting overall with the following focus. There is a appeals court ruling that for small cities, districting does not really serve the intent of the California Civil Rights Law. I believe I'm characterizing that correctly. And we also know that for especially small cities, if we, if we went back to at-large a ranked choice system of voting, arguably better fulfills the goal of the California Civil Rights Law than does a, a districting for small cities. And I would just like to suggest that we put it on an agenda for discussion, and I know that the city attorney is researching this possibility, but I think we ought to discuss it.
I, I support that wholeheartedly.
With that, we'll bring it forward as a future item for a discussion of the options and the considerations.
Okay, with, anything else?
Well, can you give us a little more clarity? Has there been a ruling that has come down that's going to change what we're already doing or that we're required to do?
This is discussion.
We're just putting, just.
On the agenda.
On agenda items. Any more, any more future agenda items?
Get into.
If I could, one sentence, I think would be helpful. The Court of Appeal ruling referred to by Councilmember Wirick is a court of appeal decision. The Supreme Court, the state Supreme Court, California Supreme Court, has not yet ruled. It has taken the matter. It should rule eventually. It hasn't yet ruled, so we are in a bit of a flux area as to that regard. I understand the request is to have a discussion of the options regarding districting and ranked choice voting and sort of see where we are. And we can bring that forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. All right. With that, thank you for your time and insights, and we'll adjourn.